The words spoken. And the air quotes, 14th and 28th. And they're both out of town. Just Cortez and Dave. I can call them. Good evening. This is the November 7th regular meeting of the Durango City Council. The time is 6:24. And begin the meeting with a roll call.
Counselor Bateen.
Here.
Counselor Bricky.
Here.
Counselor Youssef.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury.
Here.
Mayor White.
Here. The next item on the agenda are proclamations and presentations. And I believe in interest of expediency tonight with numerous visitors, we are going to make a presentation. So I'll turn this over to the Mayor Pro Tim.
Well, would you like to start?
Arturo.
Okay. Well, if you read the Durango Herald, like I am a faithful reader, you know that Fort Lewis College are champions in all ways, in all sizes. But tonight, I have asked the mountain bike team to come. So I'm going to ask Barney and Lynn, who are our athletic directors for FLC, to please come to the podium. I'm going to ask the coaches, come to the podium. Come on, coaches. You're going to introduce your team. And I want all the FLC team members to come and stand right around the podium. Let's go. Come on, FLC.
They're going to have to ride down here.
Sweetie.
Wow, that is so cool. There we go.
Mary Shin, where is she? Where's our newspaper reporter?
She's not here. We've got to use our phone. I'm taking pictures.
Okay. Step to the podium.
Okay.
The microphone will pick you up. Kids, you can come in front of the dais also here.
Like right around the front there?
Come in front. I was a school teacher. Come on. Here we go. Come on in front. Okay. Super.
Look at them from here. If you want us in it.
Want to get started?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Hey, hello. Hey. All right, we'll get started here. My name's Barney Hinkle. I'm the athletic director at Fort Lewis College. And I'd like to introduce Lynn Andrew, who is the senior associate athletic director at Fort Lewis College. And without further ado, I will present Dave Hagan, the coach of the NCAA national champion cycling team. And he'll introduce all of our winners. Here we go.
Oh, boy. I hope I remember all their names. Thank you very much. It's hard to win these championships anymore. We have a lot of competition. And it takes a special team. And this is a special team. They all, you know, I can tell you stories about each and every one of them on our trip to Nationals that, you know, stand out, that show, you know, how much commitment, dedication, and how much fun they have riding bikes, which is great. So I've got all my coaches here. Should I name them? Name my names?
Absolutely.
Oh, man. Okay. So just walking in there, we have Ian Burnett. He's one of our coaches, not directly related with mountain biking, but a coach nonetheless, who helps us with a lot of the stuff we do. Chad Cheney, who is our mountain bike endurance coach, who's been with us for, this is his second year. He had another stint with us before. El Kabruzar, the gem of the program. She's our women's and conditioning, strength and conditioning coach. And then we have Phil Callan and Brittany Callan and their son Jayden. I got your last name right, finally. And they are a couple of our gravity coaches who help our downhill team. Our downhill ladies absolutely crushed it this year, first, third, and fourth. Back there in the back, Lucas Lemare, another one of our gravity coaches. And kind of the right-hand man who, when I'm tired of driving the big truck and trailer, I'm like, Luke, you want to drive? He's like, yes, I love driving. And then Jordan Root, he's our BMX coach, but also helped us a bunch with gate starts, gate practice, came to one of the races with us. A great inspiration to all of us. Next staff would be Carson Jones Wilkins. He was our mechanic. And we had zero mechanicals at Nationals. And then, boy, this will go on for half an hour if I tell a story about each person. I'll go this way from now on. We have Cameron Sippi, a local girl who is a freshman this year.
Let's hold the applause till the end. Let's hold the applause till the end, okay?
And then we have Katja Freeburn, another local girl who's a freshman. Stephen DeBausch, senior, also a local, won a title for us in the short track. And then we have Elle Runyon, a freshman from Washington. What's your name again? Shane Ellis. He's a sophomore, also grew up in Durango. And all these Durango kids, all of us coaches have known them since they were, you know, teeny tiny, like Jayden pretty much here. So it's really cool to see these kids develop over the years. Ellen Campbell, yet another local girl. And you're a junior this year, huh?
Sophomore.
Good. We have you for a few more years. Luckily, we talked Ben Bennett into coming racing downhill with us this year. He did a great job for us. Cole Patterson, who's a junior, no, sophomore, sorry. We have him for a few more years, too. He's from Washington also. Jaren Lopwood, senior, from Utah, also club president. You don't want to know what the duties of our club president are there, you know, this big. Then we have Jason Rowden. He's a freshman from California. So it's good to have a few freshmen on the team. It's a bright future for us. Then we have Drake Smith from New Mexico, like Ben. We're glad we talked him into coming racing downhill for us this year. Bryce Hermanison from Colorado. And he's also a senior. So this is his last trip around the globe with the cycling team, which is sad to say. But it's been really cool to see all these seniors grow up and move on. And then we have Anna Sheer, downhill racer, short track racer. She actually did all four events for us during the weekend, which she was jumping from her wet short track racing kit into her dual slalom kit and bike and going and practicing that, and then going and racing downhill right after that. It was absolutely amazing. Lacey Anderson, another local gal, sophomore this year, downhiller. And we're proud to have Lacey on the team. One of the most special things of the weekend was, she's a pretty good freestyle rapper. And they just might have made a video during like a two-hour stretch. It was absolutely amazing. We have Macaulay Smith, who was our downhill national champion this year. It was great to see her progress, you know, throughout the whole weekend. And she just put it all together for that downhill run. It was cool. Henry Nadel there, he's from Colorado. And he's a sophomore. And he races really hard. And then Nash, I'm going to split you for a second. Then we have the Ender's B twins from Minnesota, and they are both seniors. Libby has raced just about all the mountain bike disciplines for us. She focused mainly on downhill this year. And Carly was a cross-country racer. And then Nash Dory, who's a sophomore from Arizona, put in some great work for the team, sold his soul during the short track for the team. It was good to see. So. Did I get everyone? Oh, awesome. Natural.
So we could get a photo with us standing in the back. And Tim Walsworth, we're down here to take a shot of, standing in front of council. So everybody kind of like shifts.
Are we all going up there?
Okay, on three. Everybody face Tim. On three. Three, two, one. Thank you. Love it. Thank you. Okay. Well, we all know that FLC rocks. Ready? Okay. All right. If I can have your attention. If you are all wondering where all these riders, local riders, come from, I'd like to introduce our DEVO coach, new head coach, Ashley Karuth. Can you please come up? And Ian Burnett? Ashley and the team, DHS and Animus, will you guys please go? And Ashley's going to tell us about your wins. This is where it all starts. And Sarah, the coaches. Levi, you want to come up? Levi? Levi?
Come on up, Levi. Hi, yes, I'm Ashley Karuth. And this is Ian Burnett. We're the two head coaches of the high school league, Nightcap High School League this fall. And it was a terrific season. I definitely feel super honored to coach these athletes because they're not only amazing athletes, they're amazing humans who are gracious and kind to each other and to other racers. There's one story, I just really feel like epitomizes this. There was, at the Ludville race, this girl from another team comes running up to me and she's like, are you the DEVO coach? And I'm like, uh, well, who's asking? You know? And she's like, no, I have to tell you, I never do this. But your team is so nice. Like, I swear, every other rider passed me by and they were just mean and like, didn't ask me how I was doing. And every single one of your athletes stopped and asked how I was doing and checked in. And they're just so great. And she was literally jumping out of her skin with excitement. She was so happy to tell me. So these guys are awesome. It's really a joy to coach them. So I'll do some introductions. And yeah, I mean, Durango High School took home state championship title this year for Division Two. And Animus High School took home fourth place for Division One. And they're competing against like Boulder High School in February, who have 2,500, 3,000 kids and 100-plus riders. So huge accomplishments for these athletes. All right, so introductions. Okay, so we've got Levi Kerlander, who is the new DEVO director over here. And behind him, Sarah Tusher, co-founder of DEVO. I've kind of had to step in and fill her shoes, which is sort of impossible, but trying. Henry Haggert here in the back, he's a junior. Next to him is John White, and he's a junior as well. See, moving forward, we've got Maddie Jo Robbins, a sophomore, who took home the title for varsity girls for Division One as a sophomore. Super awesome, psyched to have her for two more years. We've got Sage Davis right behind her. And Wiley Cora behind Sage. Next to Wiley, we've got Kobe Freeburn, may have recognized her sister a minute ago. In front of Kobe, we've got Alma Wolf, who is a junior and one of our captains. In front of her, the redhead here, Lucy Nicholson, freshman. Freshman for Durango. In front of her, Ainsley Haggert. You often see those two kind of side by side. Next to Ainsley, we have Abby Shepherd, freshman for Durango High School. And Aleah Austin here, freshman for Durango High. Behind her, Maya Zaringo, another captain and a senior. Fortunately, she's leaving us, but maybe FLC were super up. And behind her, Grace Freidiger, senior for Animus. We've got Simon Donway here in the back. And Calvin Chase here, another Animus rider. This here is Kara Crock, coach. She's also a teacher at Mountain Middle School. Yeah, super awesome to have her. Riley Amos here, who's a sophomore at Animus and another one of our captains. And of course, behind me here, Ian Burnett, the other head coach. So thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
That's Kathy Nicholson, not Lucy.
Ashley, we're going to do a photo.
Great.
Thanks, Tim.
Good job, guys. Okay, raise the cameras. On three. One, two, three.
Awesome. Thanks, Tim.
I'd like to change it. Great job. Great season.
Right.
We're going to ask the FLC kiddos to go home and do your homework. Yeah. Okay. That's the fun stuff.
So cute.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for coming. It's great. Love it. So nice. Thank you so much. Well, now, there goes all the energy.
We've got Durango High.
Oh, we've got Durango High School, yes. Okay. Good. They'll keep us going for a while longer.
I didn't think there were that many people here for a budget hearing. Anyway, continuing with the agenda, the next item is the review of the consent agenda. And before we go forward, I'd like to amend the agenda with an additional item, discussion and possible action concerning an appointment to the multimodal advisory board. The multimodal advisory board has a position dedicated to the 9R school district. And Julie Pop has stepped down from that position. And Kathy Morris has been nominated to take her place. The council very briefly this afternoon had an opportunity to review that application. We believe this is a routine item and logically falls under the consent agenda. So I would ask for a motion to add an item 4.8 to the consent agenda.
I move to add 4.8.
The consent agenda? For the, okay, the appointment of Kathy Morris.
All in favor?
Aye. Roll call.
I guess we should have a roll call.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. So now we can proceed to the reading of the consent agenda.
Item 4.1 is approval of the minutes for the joint study session of October 3rd, 2017. 4.2 is discussion and possible action concerning approval of the proposed 2018 vending calendar. Items 4.3 through 4.6 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of Monday, November 20th, 2017. 4.3 is to consider the granting of an easement to La Plata Electric Association, Inc., to accommodate power line improvements for the Gigline Gulch area. 4.4 is to consider an ordinance confirming the current organizational structure. 4.5 is to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 3, Section 25-114 of the city code, amending charges established for sewer service by the City of Durango Utilities Department. 4.6 is to consider adoption of the 2015 International Building Code and associated amendments to the code of ordinances for the City of Durango. Item 4.7 is discussion and possible action concerning Resolution R. 201734, supporting the reauthorization of the Colorado Lottery Division by the General Assembly in 2018. An addendum, item 4.8, discussion and possible action concerning the appointment of Kathy Morris to fill the 9R vacancy on the multimodal advisory board.
Is there any member of the public who'd like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Any member of the council?
I would. Mayor, please. I'd like to actually remove several. I'd like to remove items 4.2, 4.4, and 4.7.
Okay. And may we have a motion for the rest?
I move to approve the consent agenda without 4.2, 4.4, and 4.7.
Second. May we have a roll call?
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason why I wanted to remove first 4.2, it's just that I thought that this is a good opportunity to inform the community of our vending calendar dates that are on the calendar. Very important for our local community and our local businesses. And so I thought, maybe we would just take a second to inform the community of those dates that we're considering, if you want to come up to the podium.
Tim Walsworth, the executive director of Bid and Dean's Photographer.
Thank you.
So every year, Bid submits a calendar of dates to the city council for approval that allows businesses to vend on the sidewalks. It is not legal to vend on the sidewalks, except on these approved days. So Bid has submitted this calendar every year, and we're doing so again this year. We are submitting a smaller set of days this year to coincide with some shop local campaigns that my organization has created and put some budgeted money behind. And so the calendar will be, let's see, over spring break, very tail end of March and beginning of April, May 11th through 13th, which is Mother's Day weekend, Labor Day weekend, four days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. So that's late August to early September. And then in November, the 23rd to the 25th, so that coincides in 2018 with Black Friday, Small Business Saturday, and then that Sunday. And again, we think that submitting a fewer set of dates will get better participation. We've seen that a little bit as we've kind of piloted these shop local campaigns this year and got up to 30 businesses participating, where in past years, when we just had a slew of dates, there would be very few businesses that took advantage of it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That was my call.
Thank you, Mr. Walsworth. All right.
Motion now?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the 2018 vending calendar proposed by Bid.
I'll second.
And we have a roll call.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
I pulled item 4.4 only to just inform the community that originally there was an incorrect date posted that has been corrected on the agenda now. It was originally suggested to be November 21st. That has been changed. The public hearing is on November 20th. That is the date of our meeting. So I just wanted to make sure the community knows that. So I will, with that, make a motion to approve the public hearing to consider the ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 3 of the code for sewer service within the City of Durango for November 20th, 2017.
And I'll second. 4.4 is the organizational?
It's, this is, 4.4 is actually the, okay, it was changed.
You pulled, oh, okay.
Corrected all of that. You correct. So I'm correcting, then, ordinance 4.5. Is it five? 4.5, please.
Okay, we didn't pull that off. We pulled what we thought was, what you thought was 4.4. Let me, let's go ahead and finish this.
It was changed.
Okay, we need to.
And it was alerted. I'm not sure how to best fix that.
Well, we need to approve 4.4.
The, it was the same one, though, that what I was trying to correct was the public ordinance hearing for the sewer. That was original.
What transpired is there was a clerical error reported by Counselor Youssef on the date. The 20th is a Monday. We typically meet on a Tuesday. Easily explained. We, the city clerk, was able to, based on that tip from Counselor Youssef, to make the change. We can change things up to 24 hours ahead of the meeting. So it's been changed legally for the public.
So we were just making the announcement to make sure people knew.
But I think Counselor Marbury wants to make sure we approve 4.4.
Right. Yes, it's been pulled off the agenda. Do you want to go ahead and?
So that's unrelated, but I would make a motion to approve 4.4, which is organizational, to confirm the current organizational structure.
I'll second.
And we have a roll call.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
So we're clear on 4.5?
Yes, we're clear on 4.5.
Excellent.
So same motion holds?
Yep.
Okay, we have to.
Make it again?
Yes.
Motion to approve a public hearing, 4.5, to approve a public hearing to consider the ordinance.
It's already been.
Yeah, we didn't pull that. We didn't pull that off. So you're at 4.7.
Okay, okay. So 4.7, I wanted to pull just so that we could get some information to the community from the funding that we received from the Colorado GOCO grant, which has been substantial and has had a significant impact on our community. So I thought it would be a good time to let Kathy, or Mrs. Smith, tell us about this.
Good evening, Mayor White and members of city council. Durango is a special place because of the dedicated funding that we have for Parks and Recreation. And a great part of that comes from the Colorado Lottery. So the lottery was formed in 1982 by the Colorado General Assembly. And at that time, there was a funding formula approved by the lottery for the creation of the lottery. For 40% of the proceeds would go to the Conservation Trust Fund, which comes to communities based on our population. 10% goes to Colorado State Parks. And the remainder of the funds went to a capital construction fund project. And then in 1990, this was updated through a vote by changing the constitution of the state to create Great Outdoors, Colorado. And at that time, then, they began giving grant funds to cities like Durango and other municipalities across the state of Colorado. And it transferred from that original funding formula for capital projects, specific to preserving the heritage of Colorado for open space, parks, and trails. And wildlife habitat preservation. And so if you think about what's happened over this period of time for our community specifically, is we have received over $13 million from a combination of lottery funds through the Conservation Trust Fund, which is just over $4 million, and over almost $9 million in grant funds from Great Outdoors, Colorado. If you think about all the wonderful assets we have in Durango, you can't really think of one that doesn't involve these lottery funds. So I just put together a brief summary. Animus River Trail construction projects. We built Riverview Sports Complex originally with those funds. Fort Lewis College improvements with Smith Sports Complex and the softball fields and tennis courts that are currently under construction. We built Jenkins Ranch Park with GOCO funds, the Whitewater Park, and many open space acquisitions, including Overland Mountain Park, Dalla Mountain Park, Horse Gulch, Oxbow Park and Reserve. The list just goes on and on of all these wonderful assets because of this program. So what's before the council is supporting a resolution that would go directly to the Colorado General Assembly, that would be in support of reauthorizing the. Colorado General Assembly that would be in support of reauthorizing the Colorado Lottery using the same funding formula that we have today. And the proposal wouldn't come to the legislature until 2018, but across the state, communities are doing this very action so that it's very clear when the legislature has time to vote on this that there is broad support.
Thank you very much. It's had such an impact on our community that I wanted to take the time to make sure everyone knew exactly what we were doing with regards to this. So thank you for that explanation. With that, I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution in support of the reauthorization of the Colorado Lottery Division by the General Assembly in 2018.
I'll second.
And we have a roll call.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bittine?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
And moving on, the next item on the agenda is public participation. This is a section of the agenda that is set aside for questions or comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. We ask individuals to limit their comments to a five-minute period, and any audiovisual materials must be provided to the city clerk by noon of the meeting day. So if you haven't done so this time, please make a note for the future. So at this point, I would accept public input, and I believe Durango High School is welcome to be first.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Carter Ryder, and I'm the DHS Student Body Co-President, and I'm here to give you our monthly review and our update. So it's hard to believe that we are already a quarter through our academic school year. Time flies. And our 2017 homecoming, so far, so good, was a success. We had a great student turnout for our events, and we want to thank the city for all its help in organizing our events. Special thanks to the Durango Fire and Rescue for helping us with our bonfire. Our Prejudice Elimination Action Team, in conjunction with the Anti-Defamation League, is hosting a two-day peer training, offers high school students extensive training so they can lead anti-bias workshops for their peers. ADL's award-winning interactive movie, Hate Comes Home, helps students explore concepts of prejudice stereotyping and scapegoating, and develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills to prevent hate-motivated behavior before it escalates to violence. Theater Troop 1096, production of Grease, has hit the stage. Last weekend was opening weekend, and they sold out. And the following productions are this week and next week as follows. Our fall sports teams have pretty much finished up. Some highlights include our girls' and guys' cross-country team. The girls were ranked third in the state, while the boys were ranked sixth. And our ladies volleyball team was ranked first in the region and got to host regionals for the first time in over 10 years. Our football continues to stay in playoffs this Friday at Canyon City. DHS Skills USA Advisor and Career Technical Education Teacher Sean Smith was recognized as the Colorado State Skills USA Advisor of the Year. He has been nominated for the National Advisor of the Year. We'll let you know how that all works out. The 9R Transportation Department would like you to know that they've put together our transportation department that is in need of gently-used books for their Books on Board program. Books on Board allows transportation departments to have small libraries on our buses for students to enjoy while riding to and from school. Our goal is to have a small library on each of our route buses this year, and we need your help. Any books for school-aged children are appreciated. Finally, DHS sophomore Jordan Taylor made waves this fall and was crowned the Colorado State Week Surfing Champion on September 2, 2017. Jordan won this award after just three years of wave surfing and only one season of competing in the sport. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Ryder, can I ask you a question? Where do we bring books?
That's a question I'm going to direct to Dan.
Well, I think I can even answer that. It's at the elementary schools. They're at Needham Elementary, for example. On the lobby, when you walk in, there's a box, and it says, "Books for onboard for bus kids." So take your books for the bus to the school.
Full circle. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I've asked the San Juan Basin Health Department to come tonight, so if you would like to come to the podium, they have some announcements for our community.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Kevin O'Connor. I work for San Juan Basin Public Health. My job there is health coverage guide. And what that means is that I help members of the public understand their options, opportunities, and obligations under the Affordable Care Act. Anybody that's been paying attention to the news in the last few months knows that there's been a lot of uncertainty about health insurance in this country. And I want to clarify that, not only for you, but for the citizens of Durango. The first thing I want to mention is that despite all that confusion and uncertainty, it's important for everyone to understand that health insurance is still available, assistance to help pay for it is still available, and the assistance that we provide from San Juan Basin Public Health to members of the public is also still available. You've probably also heard about the rate increases that have been in the news, and that's certainly a reality. But the reality also is that the formula for adjusting assistance to help people pay for their health insurance goes up in tandem with the rates, and therefore, the reality is that people who are receiving assistance through Connect for Health will not see an increase in their cost. And despite the fact that there's been a lot of confusion, that's a really important point for people to understand.
Say that one more time.
Absolutely. Despite the fact that health insurance rates have gone up, the bottom-line cost for people who are receiving assistance through Connect for Health, Colorado, will not go up. Now, it's also an unfortunate reality that those folks who have incomes that are above the level to get assistance are going to suffer from those rates. There's no getting around that. In fact, individuals with incomes of up to about $48,000 per year and families of four with incomes of up to about $98,000 a year are able to receive assistance to help pay for their health insurance. In La Plata County, last year, that assistance averaged about $470 per month per enrollment, and it'll be substantially more for 2018. There's also been a lot of talk about the elimination of cost sharing reductions. That's kind of a fallacy. The reality is that reimbursements to the insurance companies are what ended, but assistance for people who qualify to reduce deductibles and copayments and co-insurance when they need their help the most, that's all still there. And that's a crucial point. So we encourage people not to leave money on the table. Get in contact with San Juan Basin Health to check out your options and averge a re-phone call. We can let people know what they're going to qualify for. It's been my honor for the last four and a half years to help people with this process. And I want to tell you that I have received phone calls, a number of numbers of phone calls, from members of the community, including occasionally people calling from their hospital bed, saying, "Thank you, I'm getting the care I need," or "My life was saved because you helped me get health insurance." And I don't take credit for that, but it's a reality that people need this help, they need this insurance. And I want to make sure that nobody in the City of Durango and La Plata County and Archuleta County goes without insurance because they mistakenly believe that the assistance is not available.
And can you give us the dates for the enrollment period?
Absolutely. Enrollment period has begun, started on November 1. Here in Colorado, contrary to what's in the news occasionally, our enrollment period in Colorado goes until January 12. The federal enrollment period ends December 15, but that does not affect us.
I thought it was very important for our community to know this information, and the more that we can communicate that to your neighbors and your friends, then we'll have a healthier community. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to address the council tonight? I see a familiar face.
Hello, everyone. I'm Christina Rinderly. My address is 543 East Second Avenue. I'm sure many of you have been wondering what I've been doing with my time for the last six months. I've missed the council chamber so much that I thought I'd come back and see some familiar faces. And I wanted to let you know that I'm now the Community Chair for the KSUT Capital Campaign, and I wanted to share with you a few things about that. One of the diverse things I want to do is thank you, because many of you are not only personal contributors to KSUT Public Radio, but also business contributors as well. And I wanted to thank you very much for that, because as I... When I served on City Council, I am very familiar with our council goals. And Council Goal Number Two was to foster civic engagement and democracy. And the pillar of a strong democracy is to have an independent media source, and that is with our KSUT Public Radio. And I hear from many people, as a realtor relocating to the area, that it's very important to them that we have an NPR affiliate here in our community. And it's something I think many of us take for granted as we're turning on the radio, as we get ready for work in the morning, or driving home, that we actually have that in rural Colorado, because it is so important that we're not... We're able to connect to the nation and the world in our part of the country. So I think that that is very important. And I wanted to share that I'm committing personally and professionally to this contribution campaign. And I wanted to say that under the tenure of our city manager, Ron LeBlanc, here at our city, as a city manager, he's been able to strengthen the relationship between City Council and Tribal Council. And so I wanted to share with you some of the things that introduced you to Tammy Graham, who's the Executive Director of KSUT, who many of you already know. But one of the things that's been so great is the relationship between Durango and the tribe. And the tribe has just passed a resolution that said that they will contribute a $1 million match if the community can come up with $1 million to contribute to this capital campaign between now and next October. And so I'm going to have Tammy turn it over to Tammy to tell you a little bit about that. But one of the things I thought would be pretty impactful for the city that we can follow up with you on is to maybe pass a resolution thanking the tribe for their contribution to the community, because about 60% of KSUT's support comes from City of Durango residents. And so I think that's important to know, that it is a very integral part of our community. So with that, I wanted to introduce you to Tammy Graham, Executive Director of KSUT.
Thanks, Christina. And it's great to have Christina, as you can imagine, as an advocate for KSUT, because she's been a very strong community leader, so thank you for your support of the project. I know many of you, and I know you're aware of KSUT. We were just voted the Durango Herald Best Radio Station for the fifth year in a row, and that includes commercial and non-commercial radio. So we're very proud of that. We work hard and ignatiate to continue bringing quality programming to our region. And again, as Christina said, a majority of our support, business-wise and individually, comes from Durango residents. So thank you to the Durango residents. I don't know how many of you have actually ever been to KSUT. Any of you have made it to the station? So you know firsthand, if you have, that we are in an 11-staff and a 1,200-square-foot, 80-year-old Indian Health Services building. That today, when I was on the air and I went to leave the control room, the door handle came out in my hand. Just an example of the quality of the building that we're in. People are always shocked when they come to KSUT, that we are actually functioning in a building that's more or less falling apart. So the... And the quality of programming that we transmit does not match when you actually walk into the building. So essentially, we're very grateful to the tribe. We've initiated a capital campaign, a $5.5 million capital campaign with the tribe's support, a donation of a building and the match. We're at $3.3 million towards our goal. We have this extraordinary opportunity in the next 12 months, 11 months, really, to raise $1 million. It's an all-or-nothing match. So if we don't raise $1 million in pledges and cash by October 1 of '18, we don't receive that tribal support. So the pressure's really on us, which is partly why I wanted to come here tonight, to, one, thank the City of Durango, the residents of Durango, for their support over the years, but also to let you know that we are in very, very, more-than-usual active fundraising mode. We have an annual budget of $1 million, so we need to raise in the next 11 months the equivalent of our annual budget again. So even though we're very beloved, we are also counting on our community for their support of this project to bring a modern multimedia radio station to the region. So with that, I'm going to leave each of you with a packet of material, just for your information. I know you're community leaders. You talk to a lot of people in the community, and we would hope that you would be an advocate in supporting this really important project for our region, certainly for Durango, that is KSUT. So, thank you.
Tammy, maybe I have a fair question. I was wondering how much annual giving comes to KSUT typically in a normal year?
Yeah, so KSUT, as I said, we're about at just under... This year, our annual budget for FY '18 is $988,000. We raised three-quarters of that through individuals, individual listeners. We have about 1,800 individual members in our listening audience and about 300-plus business underwriters. So we raised about $330,000 of that through business underwriting. We raised another $317,000 from individuals, special events, and grants. And then through CPB, the Corporation for Public Broadcasting, we, this year, will receive $217,000 from CPB. So we raised the vast majority of our $1 million budget ourselves, so.
So if we give twice as much as we did last year?
What's that?
If we give twice as much as we did last year, we'll be okay.
Exactly. In fact, if you're a member, you'll be receiving something in the mail. Just consider doubling your gift this year. And if all of our listeners did that, we would hit our goal. We're very proud of our broad grassroots support, that we don't just get funds from a handful of individuals or businesses. We have very broad support. Again, as Christina said, about 60% of our support comes from the Durango area, so we're grateful, and we look forward to that continued support as we have this goal in front of us.
And one thing I wanted to add, as Tammy has these out to you, that what's amazing is the KSUT, it's actually located in the enterprise zone. So as you're talking to people in the community, if somebody donates $10,000, for example, to this campaign, it's actually less than $3,500 actual cash donation due to all the tax credits and donations... Or tax credits and deductions you get being in an enterprise zone. So as people are thinking about end-of-the-year charitable giving or needing to make a tax deductible donation for the end of the year, it's a pretty great way. They can donate, for example, at $10,000. It's really less than $3,500. So it's in your pocket, and I look forward to hearing you talk to other community members. So thank you.
Thank you. We will...
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public who wishes to speak tonight? Public participation.
I'm Brett Griffin, 6 Woodland Circle. I'm here this evening to discuss an item that was to be on the agenda for this evening's City Council, but seems to be arbitrarily removed. I've been in front of City Council twice before, most recently on October 17 for Agenda I of 9.2.1, Exchange of City-Owned Land on Woodland Circle, and I was previously in front of the Planning Commission. Of the three times behind this podium, voting results was unanimously for the exchange of city property on Woodland Circle, better known as the boundary adjustment. On April 13, 2017, at 4:00 p.m., a meeting occurred between City Representatives Kevin Hall and Mark Williams and representatives of the Woodland Circle, including myself. Consensus resulting from that meeting was the boundary adjustment will occur separate from conditions and stipulations relating directly to a building permit. Payment by check for the boundary adjustment was accepted by city representatives and since has been cashed. Since the city has accepted and processed payment for the agreed conditions pertaining to only the boundary adjustment, the city has an obligation to meet this binding agreement. The city has an obligation, and Kevin Hall has assured us that he has vetted with the city manager and city attorney the concept of a two-step process, boundary adjustment with relative stipulations, and then a building permit with the relative stipulations. Why has that changed? Recently, the stipulations for the boundary adjustment have changed from the original agreement on April 13 with Kevin Hall and Mark Williams. Stipulations that are directly related to the building permit are now becoming stipulations for the boundary adjustment, and were not agreed upon at the time of payment. The city has an obligation to honor the original agreed terms and conditions which relate only to the boundary adjustment. The unrelated stipulations have absolutely no relation to property lines, exchanges of lands, or the boundary adjustment. What if we added a stipulation to the boundary adjustment stating that the mayor of Durango must do cartwheels down Main Avenue? I would say that is not relative to such an agreement. However, if that stipulation was part of a snowdown parade ordinance, I would agree. And I could see relevance out of that. It was agreed on... And I could see relevance out of that. It was agreed on April 13th that the boundary adjustment would proceed expeditiously and would be a separate process from conditions and stipulations relative to the next step in the process, a building permit. I have no issues agreeing with reasonable stipulations provided those stipulations are in the agreed and appropriate documents. Dr. Ronald Caldwell is in the process of selling his home at One Woodland Circle. It is a portion of his property, approximately 808 square feet, that will be deeded to the city of Durango, then a separate but equal portion of city land adjoining my property will be deeded to me. This should not be, this should not be a complicated process and must be completed before Ron Caldwell sells his property. Dr. Caldwell has been assured by Kevin Hall that the boundary adjustment would proceed and not complicate the sale of his home. Further delaying by the city will complicate this whole agreement. I would like to provide to the city a bargain and sale deed signed by Mr. Caldwell, deeding to the city 808 square feet. Along with that is a uncompleted but ready-for-signature deed by the city, deeding 808 square feet to myself. Kevin Hall has also assured Ms. Joanne Meisner for Woodland Circle that the boundary adjustment would move ahead. It is understood that a contract or an agreement would be necessary to lay out the conditions for the exchange of land for the boundary adjustment. I requested to city attorney Dirk Nelson that since the agreement would be a public document, that it should be negotiated between the parties. I was never contacted to meet or negotiate. The document was finally provided and was riddled with errors, incorrect information, and contained stipulations only relative to the action of the building permit. Due to the errors alone in that document, it could not be a binding agreement. During the meeting among Dirk, Kevin, Mark, Mr. Harvey McCune, Jill Griffin, and myself, I was asked to provide an updated agreement that separated the stipulations between what is required for a simple, simple boundary adjustment and would ultimately simplify the process for this boundary adjustment. Such updated agreement titled Memorandum of Agreement Between the City and the Residents of Woodland Circle was provided to representatives of the city and also approved and signed by the residents of Woodland Circle. It was provided to the city clerk on October 17. On October 11th at 3:58 p.m., Mark Williams, via email, provided comment back for that updated agreement, which acknowledged the city's, city's acceptance of such updated agreement.
Mr. Griffin, you've taken six of your five minutes.
And I will, I acknowledge that. This has been going on for seven months. Please give me two more minutes. Mark's email is such. Brett, there are a couple of items in the most current contract that you sent that cannot be accepted by the city. First, the city cannot approve an ordinance for the land swap, land swap without the title work as described in V3. Per that document, V3 reads, title work for both Lot 4 and Lot 6 have been submitted to the city. The city has approved and then shall approve the land swap and boundary swap described herein. It goes on in Mark's email saying, as we discussed and Dirk mentioned at our city hall, the old Caldwell deed is not sufficient. Since then, it has been provided. Additionally, the city cannot agree to provisions A6 and A7. A6, A7 are a timely manner for the city to approve and sign such document. If you can provide the new title work as soon as possible, preferably by tomorrow. And we all know that a title search takes a week. So now the city is requesting by tomorrow. All I'm requesting in this document is the city to expeditiously approve it. Mark's email continues on. I will not continue with that. This email specifically acknowledges the provided updated agreement in an acceptable format would facilitate the approval of the land swap. I ask the city to please provide acceptable edits to that updated contract and sign the, sign and provide the copy back. Since Mark's October 11th email, the city attorney has received the current title deed search from Colorado Title and Closing Services. So Article B3 would now be acceptable. Articles 6 and 7 are encouraging the process to get completed before the potential and detrimental to this process, sale of Dr. Caldwell's property. Now it is time for the city to sign. When can that be done? The survey has been completed and the milars have been signed. And I have provided the necessary agreed signatures by me. Placement of the monuments have been set as depicted within these milars. The city has agreed to the final version of these milars. And now it is time for the city to sign. When can that be done? I have them right here. And doing such would be a great step in the right direction. All of the requested documents, deeds, bargain sale deeds, title works, and updated agreement have been provided to the city. Please provide the signatures required for those documents and coordinate the soonest availability for signature of the milars by the city manager, engineer, community planner, mayor, and clerk. I would like to read one sentence of Exhibit 8, Article 7, Code of Conduct, Code of Advocacy. City officials must be mindful that the appearance of impropriety can be as corrosive of public confidence as an actual impropriety and must strive to avoid situations which may create an appearance of impropriety. Impropriety and now, failure to observe standards, failure to show due honesty.
Have you finished, Mr. Griffin?
I would like to provide the city clerk...
Mr. Griffin, you've been going on for 10 minutes. Would you conclude?
I would like to provide the city clerk three letters of dissatisfaction from the residents of Woodland Circle. Thank you. And we, the residents of Woodland Circle, hope the city will expedite the process for finalizing this simple boundary adjustment and end the delays. Thank you.
What's the response of...
I would ask the city attorney.
I would respond that nothing has changed since 30 weeks ago, when council directed me very clearly to have all of the items that were in the agenda doc for that night completed before we move forward with this transaction. Nothing has changed since April. Mr. Griffin was informed from the very beginning what would be required to complete this transaction. I think that we have a disagreement about a lot of details, which again, I don't think this is an appropriate place to negotiate those. We've attempted to negotiate with him. Sort of a stalemate on this issue. I sent emails today that informed him that this item was not going to be on the agenda tonight because we didn't have everything in place. So I assure council that staff is ready, willing, and able to complete this arrangement, but not in the one-sided fashion that he suggests. So when we have everything together, we will bring it back and can be approved and completed. So we've spent far too much time arguing over process when we could have had this completed months ago.
Mr. Nelson, did you tell him exactly which documents he needs to submit in your email?
I have sent him email after email. We've been with him, so yes.
So, Mr. Griffin, what I'm hearing...
I have received those emails. And that keeps reiterating the document that he's provided that is riddled with errors and not a legal binding agreement. Please keep in mind that the city accepted and cashed my payment for an agreement that is a legal binding agreement.
The city accepted...
Or the stipulations, excuse me, for the stipulations that Mark Williams and Kevin Hall agreed upon April 13th.
This is, this is highly inordinate in my term on council for, and I only have to remind Mr. Griffin, from an ethical standpoint and the accusatory nature of your commentary, what started this? What is the causal factor of your errors that caused the city to do backflips for the past six to eight months to try to figure out a way to get you out of a jam?
Then just continue those backflips.
And I'm sorry, we have. We've spent legal time. We've spent an intense amount of staff time. And to hear what you're accusing the city of Durango of causing you pain and suffering, or whatever you're doing...
Excuse me?
Uh, excuse me. Ethic violation is what you decided? You caused this? You, we are trying to help you out this day.
Did I say that was an ethic violation? Did I state that?
You, you, well, I'm about to say a number of things, but the least of which is, why are we, the city of Durango, even accommodating the violation that you conducted early and caused all this to happen? You know, why should we be trying to even solve this problem for you?
Those have been solved. The terms and conditions were agreed on April 13th. And now those are deviating from. I would like to originally go back to that April 13th meeting, reconsolidate those agreements, split them apart into two separate steps and actions that Mr. Kevin Hall agreed to.
I think you're...
Mr. Griffin, we went through this at great length...
I've reiterated that.
At the last time we went through the meeting. I don't recall having heard this particular set of objections at that time. And this is not the appropriate venue to...
No, it is not.
...resolve this issue. And the city council relies on our city attorney to provide us with accurate legal documents. And my understanding of the, my recollection of our, our last discussion of this is that we reiterated what the, you know, there were a set of conditions and saying, okay, just get the documents together. And here we are.
And those conditions were introduced from the building permit, not the boundary adjustment. Mr. Caldwell is sick and tired of being held hostage over a simple boundary adjustment.
You know, Mr. Griffin, I've sat up here for six years. We've done so many boundary adjustments. I can't even count anymore.
Well, let's do another one.
And they whizzed through here. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say to you, get your act together and get the documents to Mr. Nelson and it's over with.
He has all the documents.
Well, apparently...
What I provided to city clerk today...
Apparently not. So I suggest you work.
This is not, this is...
I agree.
This is not, this is public participation.
Mr. Kevin Hall needs to step up to the plate again and reiterate what was originally agreed upon.
This is not the time for that. I would be happy to meet, I would be happy to meet with you outside in the company of the city attorney and the city manager.
Please do.
And get this, and try to, try to find out exactly how we can resolve this and get it done. This is not a complicated issue. I don't understand how it's gotten this way. We do not have the information at our disposal to resolve it. This is, and we have other important business on the agenda.
I agree.
And I...
I do not like coming here and wasting everybody's time doing this. But this is the only opportunity that I get to publicly provide documents. And now the city has every document necessary, except for the contract with maybe as few edits that Mr. Mark Williams has acknowledged. And we can edit, make a document, sign it, and be done.
So let's get that done. But let's, we cannot finish it tonight.
I know. I know.
So thank you for...
Please contact me and let's schedule something.
Uh, I will, I, I know the staff has your contact information.
Yes.
And I will try to do something before the end of the week.
Mayor, I look forward to that. Thank you.
Is there another member of the public who'd like to speak for five minutes or less?
Yes. Well, I heard about the...
Do you have your name and address, please?
Molly Hanson. I live at 2419 Delworth in Durango, in a host home. And I know Sweetie. So I heard about the cutting the buses. So they're gonna do this in April. I'm happy for the Opportunity Bus. But I wrote, I like to ride the Opportunity Bus. The Opportunity Bus is very important for people in wheelchairs or other people with disabilities because they can't drive or have special needs. There will be less funds, but it will be very important to help people with disability get around town and be in panic. We are an important part of the community and we like to be part of Durango. I strongly believe in the Opportunity Bus. Some people cannot get to the bus stops or understand how to use them, and they need to go door-to-door. I wish this Opportunity Bus good luck. I'm sharing my opinion for all the people benefit and feel better in life. And I'm sorry about the other buses because I really don't want to cut the other city buses. But I'm just upset about the cutting the funds. So that's my thing.
Thank you, Molly.
And I was in the paper for it too. So, but yeah, I heard. And I was very, very upset too. So, I love it.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. We'd like to reiterate what Ms. Hanson said. The Opportunity Bus is not to be cut. Although, and we all are sorry about the need to establish a more sustainable financial basis for the rest of our transit system. The goal is to have something we can build back from that will be sustainable from year to year. But thank you for your comment.
But we wanted, I wanted...
Molly, we can't hear you from the, from the, from the chairs. So, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Any other member of the public who wishes to speak to the council tonight? With that, we'll move on to council reports and actions.
Well, I have some information. There's going to be a La Posta Road update on November the 13th. Mark your calendars if you'd like to come and make public comment. And that's at 5:30 at the library. They're taking public comment. Also, parking meters are free. That's a good sign. On November the 10th is coming Friday. And the fireworks began at 5:30 on Saturday. And the city council will be marching in the Veterans Day Parade on Saturday, November the 11th. There'll be, at the Transit Center, there'll be kids' activities, food, beer. There's a beer garden and there's music. So come on down. Have a great time in Durango on Saturday honoring the veterans. And during this particular event, we are honoring the Durango Fire Department for saving our town from the Lightner Creek Fire this particular Saturday. So come down, celebrate with all of us. And on Wednesday morning, tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., you can meet with the chief of police. And he'll be meeting at Durango Coffee Roasters. I always want to call it Durango Coffee. It's on Main Street. Come on down and meet with him. So those are all of my announcements. And we did take a ride at Lake Nighthorse, I will tell you. Last Friday, city council was afloat in a boat out on the lake. I can't wait for Nighthorse to open. It was a great activity for all of us, seeing exactly the width, the depth, the breadth, and the opportunities that will be coming to our community next year. Stay tuned.
I wanted to say that the La Plata Economic Alliance had their summit a couple of weeks ago. It was an excellent local conference, truly one of the best conferences we have in this local region, bringing our local business leaders, nonprofits, and private sector together. We had 312 attendees this year. It was a fabulous keynote. We had keynote speaker Kimber Lanning. She was founder and executive director of Local First in Arizona, talking about local partnerships and collaboration. It was excellent. It was very, very well-attended. And I highly recommend everyone to mark their calendar. The La Plata Economic Alliance Summit is every year, the fourth Wednesday of every October. And it's definitely worth attending. I also wanted to thank staff for taking us out on Lake Nighthorse. It was excellent. And I cannot wait to get that open for this community. It is going to be such an amazing asset. And I really appreciate our city manager, Ron LeBlanc, for coordinating that for us with Kathy Metz, our Parks and Recreation Director, and La Plata's, Anamis La Plata Association, to take us out there. It was helpful to be in the middle of the lake and really understand what an asset we have in front of us. And that's, yeah, that's all I have for this month, this week.
Real quickly, I have three things. One, I don't know how I ended up being the honoree for to...
One, uh, uh, I don't know how I ended up being the honoree for, uh, to be on a panel discussion after the Fort Lewis College musical presentation of You're in Town, uh, and who'd have thought that, uh, that would make a musical? But, uh, it had to do with the, uh, the, the, the role of government in providing utilities and that kind of thing, so, and, uh, of course, it was a corrupt, private, uh, uh, organization that charged, uh, had the audacity to charge people to pee. So that, I related that to our $64 million new treatment facility, and, uh, thank to everybody in the audience for, uh, for, uh, paying those sewer and water fees. Uh, but it also brought to vision that, that, or brought to mind the, the, what government's role and what we do here at, on city council in terms of long-term visioning and continued planning to provide necessary water rights, compliant treatment facilities for both water and wastewater, and how that's reflected in our, another hearing tonight, where we've, uh, to pass the annual appropriation ordinance, which includes the capital improvements for, uh, new, uh, water treatment facility amongst other things. So, uh, it was an interesting discussion, but, uh, Barb McGawkin, representative for the state of Colorado, County Commissioner Gwen Lackleton, LPA Board Member Gwen Unger, uh, all participated in that very important event. Uh, Friday, I'll be speaking with leadership of La Plata, uh, talking again about government's role in economic development, how leadership is challenged with the responsible growth. That again relates to some of the facilities that we have to ask the citizenry to support in, as our community grows. Lastly, uh, Sunday, I'll be going to Wash, back to Washington, D.C., uh, with the Western Leaders Network and the Environmental Defense Fund in support of our city council's stated support of the Benita Peak Superfund, and the continued funding and good work science and innovative solutions that EPA is currently implementing via the Benita Peak Superfund site. So far, it'll be a day of discussions with, uh, at the Environmental Defense Fund, and also, uh, stopping back by seeing our Senators Bennett and Gardner on Tuesday next week. So I'll be back for, on Wednesday.
I've got a couple of announcements. Uh, I think it's worth mentioning that, uh, on Friday, the 20th, the city council and staff had the pleasure of welcoming a delegation from the Peruvian Nat, Peruvian National Parks, who were, uh, in southwest Colorado to visit Nasa Verde and understand interactions between, uh, the national park here and surrounding communities in terms of tourism and, uh, related efforts. Um, since we've been going on for a while, I'll try to be brief. Um, I am, um, as the mayor, I am the liaison to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. Uh, and they met yesterday, and, uh, I think it's worth, uh, sharing with the community, especially with the business community, that the, one of the projects for this fall by the Youth Advisory Commission is a buy-local campaign for students, seeking to particularly contact businesses that, uh, do a lot of, have a lot of business from students, and to highlight the importance to the students of buying local. And, uh, so they're likely to be contacting, uh, members of Local First in particular, uh, and try to raise, um, try to attract businesses with some discounts that would attract students, uh, to those businesses. Um, yesterday also, first Mondays are both MIAC and also Utilities Commission. Uh, one of the items on the discussion for the Utilities Commission was a revision of our utility bills, uh, format, that would include, uh, breaking out of the tiers, uh, the different price tiers of our tiered, uh, uh, billing system, uh, to be more transparent about, uh, how people might be able to help control their, their water rates. Um, also, related to that, although that part of the discussion of the, um, of the utility bill per se at, at the Utilities Commission, um, the city manager is proposing, um, and, well, as part of the revision of the utility bill, uh, we're gonna break out sustainability programs, uh, as a line item on, on the bill, and, um, we are, two things, because we are not changing the water rates this year, there will not be a public hearing about water rates. Uh, we are, we are foregoing the 3% increase that had been part of the rate increase plan for the last several years. Um, the city manager is also proposing a slightly, uh, an amount, an increment slightly smaller than that, uh, in the, uh, line item to support sustainability programs. Uh, the particular direction of this would be funding a, an update of the greenhouse emissions inventory. Uh, this is in part a response to the petition we received, uh, from roughly a thousand citizens at our last meeting, and definitely goes to support, provide the baseline for actions that we plan to take, uh, as part of our membership with the Compact of Colorado Communities. Um, the council will have an opportunity to discuss these at our reconciliations, reconciliation study session next week, uh, but this is an opportunity for the, uh, you know, an opportunity to let people know that these things are in process, and you can always contact the city council at citycouncil@durangogov.org. Um, I've got another important announcement, I've got a couple of upcoming events. Uh, Thursday, again, speaking about climate, uh, the Fort Lewis College Professional Associates are sponsoring a climate symposium, uh, featuring, uh, climatologist Kevin Turn, Turnbirth from the National Center for Atmospheric Research, and members of the, uh, Fort Lewis College faculty. Uh, I have the privilege of moderating, I will have that privilege of moderating that discussion. Uh, we've mentioned the Veterans Day, um, meetings, and it's been implicit in several comments that we've made tonight, that the next city council meeting is the 20th of, of November, which is a Monday night, rather than our customary Tuesday. Uh, we've moved it up a day, um, owing to the Thanksgiving holiday. And finally, and very, very importantly, um, City Clerk has provided, and it's on the screens, I'm not sure, uh, the print is large, lot, large enough for people to read, uh, on ballot issue 2A, um, the yeses in favor of the, um, property tax increase to support the fire protection districts, 2796 in favor, that's 73%, 10,000, 1,037 against, that's 27%. Proposition 2A passes. Um, and for the Durango Fire Protection, Protection District members, uh, the numbers are, are very similar percentage-wise, 70% in favor, 3280, 30% against, 1396. Uh, both of those issues are passing decisively. Uh, I wanna thank-
Yes.
Everybody.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Uh, this is a, a really important piece of, uh, supporting our public safety in Durango. I am delighted that citizens of the city and of the district, uh, understood the need, that the, the rock and the hard place that the fire district was between increasing demand that they can't really not meet, uh, and their decreasing revenue. Uh, this is a really important step forward, I wanna thank everyone. And with that, we will move on to the rest of our agenda. We have a number of public hearings scheduled tonight. Uh, the first are legislative and policy hearings, of which I believe there are three, there are two, uh, and then a quasi-judicial hearing. Um, by previous act of the city council, uh, there are two items, uh, that have been set for public hearing at this meeting. The issues dealt with this portion of the agenda are of legislative or policy nature. Um, let me get my cheat sheet up here. The first is a public hearing to consider the 2018 proposed budget and highway users' tax funds receipt. Uh, the second one would be a public hearing to consider the 2018 annual appropriation ordinance. Uh, I would ask the city attorney if it would be appropriate to consolidate the public input on these two, uh, closely related items.
That'd be fine, yes.
Okay. Um, with that, Ms. Brown has the staff report.
Good evening. Tonight is the public hearing to consider the city manager's 2018 proposed budget. The proposed operating budget is in the amount of $78,937,314, which includes operating expenditures, inter-fund transfers, and transfers to the capital improvement program. The capital improvement funds comprise of an additional $9,711,294 in expenditures. Listed on this slide are the different categories that I'll be highlighting tonight during the presentation. As city council is aware, the budgeting process for the city takes several months. City departments began working on the capital improvement budgets in June, and then began creating their operating budgets in the month of July. City council set and adopted goals on July 18th. A public workshop on the budget was held on July 26th. Um, on September 26th, the city manager presented his, um, proposed fiscal year 2018 budget to city council. Several hours of meetings were held in the last month to discuss the entire budget, and today we are at the public hearing for this budget. The proposed budget and budget funding priorities reflect the city council goals that were adopted this summer. There are four main goals and several objectives under each. Overall, the proposed operating fund expenditures are decreasing by 2.9%. General fund operating expenditures are proposed to increase 0.7%. Sales tax growth is projected at 0% over the 2017 adopted budget. Lodger's tax increase is projected at 16.6% or $168,750 over the 2017 adopted budget. This budget has a 3% rate increase program to the water and sewer fund, although subsequent discussions have occurred to remove the increase in the water fund. So the Sustainable Services Fund has a 6% increase program for sustainability. The airport fund has several capital projects that address, um, capital needs. The Transportation Services Fund is, continues to struggle to remain fiscally, fiscally sustainable with looming, looming decreased grant revenues from the state and federal governments on the horizon. A public engagement process has begun to determine next steps and service cuts in this fund. There are several new positions proposed in the 2018 budget. The city's workforce will expand by eight new FTEs. In the general fund, one position is being eliminated with the addition of seven new positions. Three new positions relate to the opening of Lake Nighthorse in 2018. The water and sewer fund are adding two full-time equivalents, one which will be split 50/50 between water and sewer, and the other in the sewer fund. As seen on the slide, the largest operating budget is the general fund, which is comprised of 48% of all operating expenditures. Water and sewer fund operating expenditures account for about 19%, and airport and transportation each comprise about 5% of total operating expenditures, followed by the solid waste fund with 3%. Personnel services equate to about 40% of all operating funds, or approximately $12 million. Contractual services, which include items such as contracts and professional services, account for about 46, 46% of operating expenditures. Capital outlays approximately 9%, which includes the transfers of operating funds to the capital improvements funds. Supplies make up the remaining 5% of operating funds. As stated before, the general fund is the largest operating fund. In 2018, total revenues will increase by 2.5%, just under $1 million. Um, as I stated before, there's no city sales tax growth over the 2017 adopted budget. Charges for services are seen about a 20.5% increase due largely from revenues generated from Lake Nighthorse operations and from fee increases at the recreation center. Expenditures are expected to increase 0.7% or just under $300,000. Personnel-related expenditures are increasing just over $1.4 million due to salary increases and increased health insurance costs and the new, um, positions that are being added into the general fund. As stated previously, that net change is six FTEs. Um, there are only three capital projects funded from the general fund that, um, and the transfer to the capital projects fund is decreasing by $1.3 million, oh, under The proposed general fund revenues are $38,674,973. 58% of this, or 22.5 million of this, is sales tax revenues. Charges for services is 12% of the revenues, intergovernmental revenues generate about 5%, and property tax generates 4% of total revenues. Sales and use tax revenues have steadily increased from 2010, but as I stated before, those revenues are going to see both a 0% increase over the adopted 2017 budget in Total general fund operational expenditures for 2018 are $38,196,283. As depicted, from 2013 to 2017, we were able to put a larger portion of our fund balance to capital infrastructure projects. In 2018, the general fund is only supporting three capital projects in the amount of $825,000 due to increase in operational expenses and a limited fund balance. Public safety is the largest category of expenditures in the general fund, with just over $12.6 million. Parks and Recreation is proposed at just under $8 million, and general government is, is just under $7.9 million, while Streets is $3.6 million in expenditures. The library consists of $2.2 million, and community support, non-departmental, and transfer to capital make up the remainder expenditures in the general fund. The city of Durango operates, um, six special revenue funds. These funds account for restricted funds. Um, we have the 2015 sales tax fund, the road impact fee fund, Durango Tourism Fund, Conservation Trust Fund, Storm Drainage Fund, and Park Development Fund. Three of these special revenue, um, funds have expenditures in 2018. The 2015 sales tax fund has expenditures, expenditures just over $4.5 million. The final debt service payment on the recreation center will be funded in 2018 from the sales tax. Um, the additional funds are the capital projects. Road impact funds are used to pay a portion of the debt service on the Florida Road reconstruction. Um, the third fund that has expenditures is the Durango Tourism Fund. As I stated before, we're projecting an increase of 16.6% in the lodger's tax, um, over the 2017 adopted budget. The expenditures in this fund maintains funding for Durango Transit at $250,000. It increases funding to the Durango area tourism, tourism office by 3%, and it transfers $100,000 to the general fund for special events that bring out-of-town visitors to Durango, um, for example, Fourth of July snowdown, and several of those other larger The city operates four internal service funds, the general services fund, the capital equipment replacement fund, the risk manager fund, and the self-insurance fund. Internal service funds are used to account for the financing of goods and services provided primarily by one city department to other city departments on a cost reimbursement basis. The largest internal service fund is the self-insurance fund, at just under $5.5 million. The capital equipment replacement fund accounts for the maintenance and replacements of all vehicles and equipment in the SURF program. The risk manager fund manages the property and casualty insurance, as well as the workers' compensation insurance for the city. The city operates five enterprise funds, the water fund, the sewer fund, the transportation services fund, the sustainable services fund, and the airport fund. The largest enterprise fund is the sewer fund at $7.6 million, followed by the, um, water fund at $6.8 million. The airport fund expenses are proposed at $4.1 million, while the Sustainable Services Fund is at $2.6 million, and the Transportation Services Fund is at $3.6 million in expenses. Water fund revenues are expected to decrease by 7.9%. Operating expenditures are expected to, um, decrease as well by 0.7%. Staffing changes, there is a new project manager, manager position needed to expedite backlog of capital projects, which will be funded 50% by the water fund, and then the capital, transfer to capital projects has decreased by $600,000 to $2.83 million in 2018, over The sewer fund revenues are budgeted to increase 2.6%. There is a 3% increase program for residential and commercial sewer rates. Operating expenditures, expenditures are increasing 11.5% due most largely to staffing increases and changes. We, as I stated before, the project manager will be split 50/50 with water and sewer, and we are adding a new Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility operator position. Um, the transfer to capital projects in this fund is decreasing by $1.5 million, and debt service payments for the new Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility construction is built in there at just under $3.4 million in debt service payments. Whoops, sorry. Um, the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility, this should be playing, hold on, we have a time lapse here, is the largest infrastructure project in cities' history. Um, we have a fantastic team working the project, and this two-year project is expected to be complete by May of 2019. The airport fund revenues are budgeted to increase 1.1%. The airport fund revenues are budgeted to increase 1.1%. On-site parking revenues are budgeted to increase 2.9%, and they are the largest revenue generator at the airport. Operating expenditures are increasing at 1.2%, and there are no staffing changes proposed at the airport. We are transferring about $815,000 out of the operating fund to the Capital Projects Fund to address several small-scale projects on the airport property. Revenues in the Sustainable Services Fund are set to increase 5.7%. There is a 6% rate increase for sustainability funding built into the, programmed into the budget. Operating expenditures are increasing 0.5%. We are, as stated earlier, looking at displaying the sustainability program as a separate line item on the monthly bill for better transparency. There are no staffing changes in this fund, and we are funding one capital project in the amount of $25,000. The Transportation Services Fund has a total revenue decrease of 1.9%. Federal grant funding decrease this year is 2.5%. Parking meter revenues are remaining stable. The proposed operating budget increases 3.2%. The fund, as we've stated many times, is not financially sustainable. We are transferring $97,000 out to the Capital Projects Fund for a couple of projects with the parking meters. The public engagement process has began to work through the priorities and services and determined the process to move forward to the fund being fiscally sustainable. There are four capital projects funds in the 2018 proposed budget: the Airport Construction Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, the Open Space Parks and Trails Fund, and the Capital Improvement Fund. The Capital Projects Fund is the largest fund in this category with over $4.3 million in projects. This fund accounts for projects funded by the general fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, the Sustainable Services Fund, and the Transportation Services Fund. The Open Space Parks and Trails Fund has just over $1.9 million in projects. The Capital Improvements Fund expenses of $2.25 million are exclusively used for debt service for the library and Florida Road. Currently, the Airport Construction Fund has $890,000 in capital funds funded out of the operational fund balance. Conversations with the FAA are ongoing for FAA-funded projects and will be added to the budget during reconciliation next week. State law requires that the budget hearing process also addresses the proposed uses of the highway users' tax funds distributed to local governments from the gasoline taxes imposed and collected by the state. These funds must be used for street purposes. The city spends substantially more on its streets than it receives from highway user taxes. In 2018, the distribution to the city from these taxes is approximately $530,000. In comparison, the 2018 proposed operating budget for streets in the general fund is $3.6 million with an additional $650,000 in street-related projects programmed in the CIP. Areas where highway user tax funds may be used in '28 include overlays, chip ceilings, crosswalk striping, sign replacement, and snow removal. Next steps. Today, we're holding the public hearing for the proposed budget. During budget meetings in the last several weeks, council has set aside those items on the proposed budget that they would like to discuss in further detail. Those items are set to be discussed on November 14th. After budget reconciliation on the 14th, budget adoption and adoption of appropriations ordinance will occur on December 5th, with the mill levy being certified to La Plata County by December 15th. There is no fiscal impact associated with conducting a public hearing. Action on the final adoption of the appropriations ordinance will authorize spending in the amounts indicated above or as amended by City Council. It is a recommendation of the city manager and myself that the City Council by motion direct staff to prepare the appropriation ordinance to be introduced at the 2018.
The nitty-gritty of all of that. We really appreciate the hard work. At this time, and the second public hearing is associated with the appropriation ordinance, that requires a separate motion from the council, but these are basically legally necessary. The budget and the appropriations for it are legally separate, but conceptually the same. So I will open a public comment on either of these, either is the budgetary issues. Remind people that please provide your name and address for the record, that you have five minutes. A designated spokesperson would be allowed 10 minutes if he or she is speaking for at least two other individuals who are present at the meeting as a way of saving time. And ask the council to withhold comment until we've heard from the public. At this time, I'll open the hearing.
Mayor White, my name is John, I'm with 1831 Crestview Drive. I'm here tonight to talk about two line items and one big picture. I'll start with the two small line items. The first item, I'd like to be removed. I know this is a unique situation. Most people ask to add things to budgets. First one to be removed is the Ridge's Basin Water Treatment Plant Pipeline. The reason I say that is a few things. When you're doing a budget, you need to be mindful of affordability. Some projects, the big projects, wait and make sure we can afford them. And you must balance bonding with cash funding. If we bond, people for the next 20 years will help pay for this. If we pay cash, the current citizens pay now for a project that isn't needed for many years. We have sufficient water now. We have sufficient capacity at the plant. We don't need this project now. This portion of the project is sandwiched between two portions that will be bond-funded. You guys purchase the water with bond money, you're going to build the project on money. This one's right in the middle. Why is this one different? To be funded by cash instead of a bond. You also must consider what if the debt isn't approved for the second portion of this project? They have a pipeline to nowhere out there. And most likely, this isn't going to be built this year. The land purchased, there's not a plan. This amount of money can wait for down the road. The second project I'd like for you to remove is the Garlic Land Acquisition with the water fund money. There are other, the reason given for the purchase of this property with the fund money is that the tank and the access aren't guaranteed in perpetuity. You have easements to it. You have other tanks with easements that aren't on property, on city-owned land. I'm curious why this piece of property does not have a perpetual easement when it was a project that was completed in the early 2000s. I have a hard time understanding why staff in the early 2000s built this project when they didn't have perpetual access to the tank. Picture item is something I've touched on a little bit before, and it has to do with the budgeting for. This budget does not accomplish three basic concepts of budgeting. How much money will be spent in 2018? What's the real fund balance at the end of 2018? And is there sufficient cash for all the projects that you guys have on the books? The biggest problem with the 2018 budget is it does not disclose which capital projects will be done in 2018. The Lock Water Fund by itself is nearly $15 million, and it's not shown that there's sufficient money to do that. If staff really intends to do all these capital projects across the board, water, sewer, general fund, they should say so and be accountable for completing those projects. If not, we should spread that money out into the future, into 2019 or later. I'm encouraged to see you guys start addressing the carryover. Staff has presented a list at the mission meeting, which, Mayor White, you said you were startled to see that list. At the recent council meeting, Councilor Brooke and Councilor Marbury said they'd seen that document before and it's common knowledge. However, I submitted a court request for that exact information months ago, and I was told it didn't exist. So I guess I'd like the three other councils, Use of Council, Routine, and Mayor White, to discuss, have you seen these reports previously? And if you haven't, you know, this is for all the projects. This is water, this is sewer, this is capital. It's not, the list you guys got was just the utilities. You should have gotten a list for all projects of when the money was appropriated, how much is going to be spent in 2018, and when the expected completion is. Mayor White?
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Any other member of the public wish to speak to the budget ordinance? Going once, twice, we'll close the public hearing and ask for comments from the City
Well, I have it right here in my hands, Mr. Simpson. Projects, the year it was appropriated, and the amount of money about appropriations. I'm sorry you haven't seen all this, but, you know, City Council works with staff all the time, and when we do our budget meetings, each director comes to the City Council to talk about their projects. And this year, because the budget is so limited, there are very few big projects going on. Of course, the big sewer plant's going on because that's been bonded. And you ask about removing Ridge's Basin Pipeline. I say no. Our job as a City Councilor is to have a vision for the future. Now, I was just thanking the City Council who appropriated about $1 million for the water rights to Lake Night Horse. That was done in maybe 2005? I can't remember, a long time ago. And so they set it up for us to be able to have water rights for the future. My grandchildren will benefit from the water in Lake Night Horse, and so will yours. And so that's called having a vision and looking forward. Fred Krager worked on the Anamis La Plata 75 years ago. So here we are benefiting from what happened with Fred Krager and other people's work on the ALP. We call it Night Horse now, but it's really called ALP. So that's called having a vision and moving forward. Projects don't always get completed. There's a timeline, things happen. So I'm very grateful that the Ridge's Basin Pipeline will happen, there will be in the future another water plant. You know, we only have seven days of water over the city reservoir. That's it. That's it. And the whole idea is that you build another water treatment plant to take the Rogers Plant offline for any repairs. It's over 60 years old. That's called planning, and that's what City Council does, and that's what the staff does. And the Garlic Tank, we'll have a presentation later. I'm not going to address anything about the garlic matter. That comes up later in City Council. And the budget procedures, unfortunately, because we don't have a lot of money, there's only a few projects. I think we have a street project going on for about $650,000, and that's about it, folks. So City Council and the directors of all the departments look at what the money is and what we can fund. And it's scrutinized, and it may not answer all your problems, John, but I'm telling you, from our sitting up here and working with the staff, we do know what's happening, and we do understand the projects, and we have complete faith in the staff. There's nothing hidden, there's no secrets, it's not a mystery to any of us, there's nobody hiding anything. It's all boring and straightforward and just about as nitty-gritty detailed as you can get. So maybe you can't see it from where you're sitting, but the staff has, works hours on the budget, every director, the city manager, all those hearings. It's all straightforward. That's all I can say. It's very straightforward, very, very above-board. Anybody else?
I echo what Sui says. You know, I don't know why you weren't provided with that information when you made that request, but...
I think it was a public record, maybe?
Public records request. I certainly don't understand the situation there, but, you know, I appreciate diligence and persistence in public interest. But, you know, I recall how, what a difficult decision this council and the previous council had when we had to increase sewer and water rates because no other council for the past two to three decades had made those difficult decisions to... Don't shake your head, that's a fact. I sat here and I made those decisions. It was extremely difficult because the lack of planning and the lack of budgeting and the lack of foresight from other city councils. I don't think it was really a lack of foresight, I think it was just a lack of political will. This council had to make that really, really difficult decision to increase sewer and water rates to continue a responsible growth for the next 40 to 50 years of this community. And without that, you will have the same problem that we had 30 years from now, a lack of money. We should have done it then, we could have afforded it then, we can't afford it now. And that's exactly why we make these decisions and why we're going to pass this capital improvements budget this evening.
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify something? The state has a very rigid public records process. We're required to keep records in a fashion that they're open to the public. So when we get a records request, that is a priority for staff, but it's for a record. It doesn't require staff to do work for the citizen requesting information. And I think that's the confusion that Mr. Simpson has left with the public place comment and with the council. We did not have a record that matched his request.
Okay.
And it's not that we're not being transparent, we just don't do staff work. We do staff work for the council, not for citizens. And it's very clear in the law how we approach records requests, and those are a priority. When that comes into the clerk's office, we literally drop everything and get that addressed.
And that would be, for example, city council minutes, study session minutes?
It's more than that.
Okay.
It's reports that we might have in a department. It's, anything that we create as a record is available to the public.
One other question for Ron. You know, there was a statement that was made that we funded the water rights acquisition with the bond?
We did, and the way that worked is, as Mayor Pro Tem Marbury mentioned, a previous council, and it's probably '05 or somewhere in that history, they set aside $1 million, and that was done over a number of years. They set a certain percentage a year. And then when Lake Night Horse was full, we had an opportunity to exercise a right to have storage in that reservoir. And I approached the City Council at that time with a funding mechanism. Anything that is a debt, it has to go to a vote. And again, the council at that time decided we would go to the higher standard, which is a Tabor standard. The request in a Tabor does not require an enterprise fund to go to a vote of the people. Our charter says all debt must go to a vote of the people. So when we crafted the language that was presented to the public, we used the higher standard, the Tabor language, and it passed, I think, 2 to 1 or 3 to 1. So we financed the remainder of what that would cost. I think we're in the $6 million area, and we got a very good...
Interest rate.
Interest rate, and we're paying for that in the water fund right now. So that's one step, it's one step at a time. You have to look at these things over the course of time, and we make progress by making little steps. And that's the way you have success.
Well, as a new counselor, I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments that our mayor and the other councils have made, thanking the city for, as someone who's going through this process for the first time, their incredible diligence in presenting detailed information to the council in an understandable package over a very long period of time. So Julie, Amy, all of the city staff members who presented, I was just... So, Julie, Amy, all of the city staff members who presented, I was just incredibly impressed by the process. And as somebody who's been in business my whole life, I think I've never seen a more diligent process. It's obvious the reasons that you win so many awards for your fiscal responsibility and financial management over the years, and I think you should be congratulated for that. I also wanted to echo the sentiments of Mayor Pro Tem Marbury in looking at some of these issues as critical planning issues for the future, specifically this Ridge's Water issue. I think it's the foresight of looking to the future for that, and the redundancy issues that are relevant to it, and everything that's associated with making those decisions now instead of putting that upon a future council is how we like to view these decisions as a body. And I think it's a critical way to view it, and it's within a very limited structure in terms of funding. But I'm impressed, and thanks for all the work that you guys do.
Well, I'm going to do a show and tell. Okay, here's the book, here's the budget, and we sat down, and it's, what, 300 pages? And I guarantee you, I've read every page, and so have they, of every line item, going through every department, every service, every fund, every debt, every revenue, you know? Here it is. And it's all in black and white. And so, we've done our job, the staff has done their job, and, you know, you may not like it. You may not like the project, but I do believe in planning, and I do believe that my grandchildren should have that water in the future. And so, I hope that I'm around to see it happen.
In terms of the comments?
I would agree that it was an excellent, very thorough process, and it is complicated. There is a lot to learn. I think it takes a long time to really get familiar with this process, but my questions were answered well. I really appreciated all the departments, the budgeting process that they, the time that they kept to for the day, an entire day spent going through this. So, it was very helpful, and I look forward to going through it some more. But I feel all my questions were answered, and I hope that questions for the community can get answered with time, because I think that there are explanations that can be made.
I'd like to make a couple of comments to respond to Mr. Simpson. One of them is the pipe. We are partners. There's an outlet from the dam to the edge of bureau reclamation, at which point there will be a split between the city and presumably La Plata will be a partner in our efforts there. And then, I'm not sure...
Southern Utes?
Certainly the Southern Utes, I believe the Navajo...
Farming?
And Farmington. There are several other partners in the, you know, all of whom have purchased the water rights from Lake Nighthorse, who will be responsible for the ultimate delivery of water to someplace. But first, we've got to get the water from Lake Nighthorse to the edge of the Bureau of Reclamation property. The amount that's being budgeted is the city share of that pipeline. And it has been part of the plan from the very beginning as to say, all right, we've got the water storage in Lake Nighthorse, how does anybody else get to use it? In our tour of the lake the other day, two things were pointed out to us, one of which was the input of the water being pumped up from the Animus River. The other was, besides the dam itself, was the outlet that the La Plata West Water Authority have constructed while the lake was still filling, so that they can ultimately fulfill their delivery of water to Lake Durango and residents on the dry side. So, but the main outlet is going to be from the dam out through. And the plan from the very beginning of this whole process was to complete that delivery system. And as the city manager just mentioned, it's a series of small steps, and completion of that pipe is one of those. The water treatment plant itself is the fulfillment of a long series of steps. It's still uncertain exactly when that will be built, because it's still unclear exactly when we'll all agree on when that water's coming out. But we have plans in place to go ahead for that. When the multi-tens of millions of dollars for that actual construction comes to bear, that will be bonded and shared among future users. The other thing that's in the water fund, and I have, this has just occurred to me as I was thinking about this meeting, that earlier this year, when we had to vote on the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility, the bids came in, what, $8 million over the projected budget? The response of that was to say, okay, if we take the administration building out, then we can build the rest of, the functional part of the wastewater treatment plant. And the consequence, and I noted this at the time, okay, we can go ahead and cash fund the administration building in a future contract, presumably next year. And that will be because both water and sewer will be housed in that building, the cost of that facility will be split. But the fact that we suddenly had to plan to cash fund $8 million worth of construction, I said it at the time, oh, that means that some of these other capital projects that have been approved and appropriated are going to get pushed out because the funding has to be provided here. So, and this has happened to us in other portions of the budget, where some project, it has happened recently with construction up at the college for the tennis courts. Construction is coming in really high right now. Concrete's very expensive, labor's very expensive, and we had to make some adjustments of a planned Parks and Rec project that would say, well, we can put that, you know, completion of that piece, and here's some of the money that was appropriated for that, and staff suggested to the council we reappropriate that to complete this project now. We've done that numerous times in the past. I think the, you know, the annual review of, or at least addressing, okay, where are we with all of these projects? That's not something I've seen routinely from year to year. I think that having that is a plus, and I expect that we'll see that in the future. But given the very hard work that staff has done in laying out the plans for improvements, and especially this year with the limited, you know, as the operating funds has almost consumed the available general fund revenue, you know, we've got one streets project. Sorry that, we did get an email from, I've forgotten the man's name.
Stephen Pfeifer.
Stephen Pfeifer.
I wanted to make sure that got on the record.
Yes, because Mr. Pfeifer has, more or less every year for the last several years, been appealing to the city to complete the capital construction of Thomas Avenue, which is, we all agree, is badly needed. It got bumped back to 2018 because of the extra cost for the construction of Wilson Gulch Road. These things happen all the time. Mr. Pfeifer was appealing to council, please don't do this again. And the city manager, when he presented the capital budget, he said, this is the one project we are going to do in 2018. Part of the budget documentation includes the fact that our streets capital improvements to keep up with the maintenance schedule that we want to make where we can maintain or improve our average pavement condition index, we should be investing something in excess of $2 million a year. That one project, it's $650,000, is all we're going to be able to do this year. This is symptomatic, this is one of the numerous looming fiscal issues that the city residents and businesses will be hearing a lot more about as we go forward. So, I would like to acknowledge again Mr. Simpson's diligence and persistence on this. He has, I think in the end, we don't agree on his recommendations, but I think he has prompted us to look a little harder at exactly why we're doing what we're doing, and I think that we will be better going forward for that. So, with that, I would solicit a motion, the first on item, which is, what do we...
Highway funds?
Yeah, the, on the proposed budget and highway user tax funds.
Budget resolution? Well, I will move to direct staff to prepare the budget resolution to be approved at the December 5, 2017 city council meeting. That's all I have on this document.
Second, then? May we have a roll call?
Councillor Frick?
Yes.
Councillor Marbury?
Yes.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Can we, Mr. Nelson, go directly to the next one?
Yes.
Okay.
The next one is a public hearing. The nominal agenda item is a public hearing to consider the annual appropriation ordinance for the year 2018. We've accepted public input relevant to this issue, so I would accept a motion.
I move to direct staff to prepare the appropriation ordinance to be introduced at the December 5, 2017 city council meeting.
Second?
Well, we have a roll call.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Marbury?
Yes.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor Frick?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Moving on, we have one quasi judicial hearing. This is an item continued from our last meeting concerning the 73 Jamison annexation and initial Mr. Williams, bring the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I think I need to recuse myself on this issue because I wasn't here for the public testimony the last time. Okay, so, I'll see you in a bit.
Are you going to make a comment?
Mr. Mayor, is there special commentary relative to the...
Yeah, there is. This is a situation where this was posted as a public, a continued public hearing. The city attorney has reviewed the record carefully, and the evidence is that we, in fact, closed the public hearing as we heard it the last time. If we were to actually reopen the public hearing for additional public input, that would require re-noticing the meeting and delaying it to the next meeting. My understanding, and I'm looking to staff to give a summary of this, is that the proposal has been revised and appears to be acceptable to the city, to the applicants, and we understand the neighbors. So, in the interest of expediting this issue, I would also stress that what is at issue here is the annexation. Concerns about the details of the design, of the project will come back to the public, to the Planning Commission and to the city council when the actual development comes forward. What's being considered tonight is only the annexation and the initial zoning, and the primary concerns that were expressed and were unclear at the last meeting, I think have been, appear to have been resolved by the negotiations that have taken place. And so, I would ask staff to come forward with the report to explain where we are now.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mark Williams, Community Development. So, to pick up the thread from where we left off, on October the 17th, staff had initially recommended a through street. That didn't occur. Staff also said that a cul-de-sac was acceptable. The applicants were not in favor of the cul-de-sac and considered withdrawing at that time. Council urged them not to withdraw and to go through a dialogue and negotiation process. And that's what's happened for the last three weeks. There's been a lot of back and forth between staff, between the applicant, between the neighbors as well. And so, it feels like we've finally been able to coalesce all three of those disparate groups into rallying around a solution that is acceptable to everybody. So, this is the property in red, 73 Jamison Drive. It's currently the Pocket Electric property. It's slightly over an acre. It would be annexed as residential medium, which would allow up to 12 units per acre. This is the Jamison Drive, and the parts, one of the parts that is confusing about this project is that some of this is in the city, that's in the city, these lots, these lots are in the city, the rest of it is not, except for this. So, these are in the unincorporated county. So, it's a unique situation, to be sure. So, staff has discussed this project with the applicant numerous times and with the neighbors. The neighbors appear to be accepting of the project. They have some concerns that can be addressed in the next step of this process. As Mayor White mentioned, what we're looking at right now is annexation and initial zoning. This project will come back if it develops for more public hearings, and the details of some of those public hearings can be addressed at that time. So, this went to Planning Commission in August, and then, as I mentioned earlier, council first heard this in October. And then, after the October 17th, the applicant came back to the city with a design concept. So, we don't want to call it a conceptual design. That sort of implies that we're in a plan development process, or some kind of formal site plan review. This is really a design concept. This is called a green court or a pocket neighborhood, and if you can find the mouse. So, what you're looking at is a central green court that is just a pedestrian space, a gathering space for the neighbors who would live here. And then, it'd be surrounded on each side by five lots. Each of these five lots would have a driveway that's shared between 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 on each And as I mentioned earlier, this is not what we're reviewing tonight, but this is an idea of what the applicant wants to do. So, the city has standards for lot sizes, setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera. This is sort of based on something that would be allowed. These dimensions are likely to change, but this is the general idea of what it is they want to do. Another important thing that has happened is, I mentioned the through road and the cul-de-sac earlier, and how that really wasn't acceptable to any more than maybe one out of three of the different parties involved, and four if you include Speaker Council. So, what we have come up with is, called a hammerhead. Instead of a through road or a cul-de-sac, which the applicants didn't like because a cul-de-sac would have taken 25% almost exactly of their property, reducing their development potential substantially, is this hammerhead, which allows city service vehicles like snow plows and garbage trucks, as well as fire protection vehicles to turn around if they need to. It also doesn't prevent an extension of the road at some point, potentially at some point in the future, whether that's through Jamison or through the Atmos property. Staff, Scott Shine, did talk to the representative at Atmos to discuss the potential for this parcel here to redevelop at some point. At the previous meeting, I believe Councillor Marbury, I may be mistaken, mentioned it would be great if we could look at this project more of a big picture rather than one parcel at a time. And while that's true, Atmos is not planning to do anything with their parcel and... And while that's true, Atmos is not planning to do anything with their parcel, and I think the longest term plan they have is a five-year plan. So, we have to go forward with what we have, and that's this project and a hammerhead that would be designed to allow garbage and other vehicles to turn around. One of the conditions of approval that we would like to see is that the future residents would bring their garbage and recycling to the street so that our trucks wouldn't have to go all the way down and then back up. So, a lot less beep 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 at 6:00 in the morning for the people who live here, and also it's easier, more efficient for our city crews. This is a more detailed site plan. So there would be garages, conceptually, behind each of the units, and shared driveways. We also need space for snow storage, that's one of our conditions of approval. On this side, it's a little bit easier, the lot is not a perfect rectangle or square, so it angles out up here, and there's snow storage space. There's also space over here, so that's a design detail that'll have to be worked out during the review when we actually look at something that is proposed to be built. This is what a pocket neighborhood or cottage court looks like. I guess that's our, I was looking at this earlier, and I thought someone had just sketched a stick person on top of that roof, but it's actually artwork coming out of the garden. I couldn't tell in the small version that I had. So, these are, these are popular design concepts in different parts of the country. This is, I know it's from Seattle, and I don't know where the other two are from, but as you can see, they're, you know, they're nice neighborhoods, and we had a lot of success, we being the city with these, and Three Springs, there are several of, several parts of Three Springs that have been designed like this. So the design would require three variances. Right now, the city code allows up to four units on a shared driveway. The applicants would be asking for five on each, so an increase of one. There are other criteria involved in having private driveways. The one criteria out of five, I think there are five, that it would need is that the space between the garage and the private portion of the vehicle access and the shared portion is 22 feet. Other than that, there are four others that this project would need. We talked about the hammerhead. This is a compromise that makes the project work, so that's a very important point to making this project work. And then another situation would be the amount of guest parking. So, what our code says is that on streets that are designed for on-street parking, you don't have to provide additional parking if you build a house. Every house is required to have two parking spaces, off-street parking spaces. But if it's on a street that's not designed for on-street parking, that means typically that the houses would have to have an additional parking space because, you know, people come over, friends visit, whatever. There is space for at least five cars to park in front of Jameson, or in front of the development on Jameson Drive. And if we go back all the way, some of Jameson is designed for on-street parking, some of it is not. So this is a detail that will definitely have to be worked out when the applicants come back with a more detailed development plan. But as it stands right now, this is something that we would need a variance for. So earlier I mentioned the amount of dialogue that's been going back and forth between the staff and the city and the neighbors, and here's, these are some of the highlights of what we have been talking about. Staff is requesting that the applicants build a sidewalk extension here. This is the city-owned lot, this is Colorado Avenue, right here. The sidewalk currently ends right there. So this sidewalk would connect Jameson to Colorado and let people, well, anyone who lives on the street to walk on a sidewalk all the way to Colorado. We would want to have some general design guidelines. We do already have design guidelines in our code, but if we're doing something specialized like a green court, we may have some additional design requirements. Upgraded emergency access onto our connecting Jameson to Colorado, this is an important one. So, what we would like to see is this area right here to be improved. So vegetation removed, there are probably some Siberian elms or other vegetation that would need to come out. Repair the gravel, and then there are two poles on the far west end of Jameson Drive with a chain in between. That would be replaced with a crash gate that's acceptable to Durango Fire. So that would allow Durango Fire to access the property from the west or from the east. It also eliminates the cul-de-sac restriction that's in our code. One of the reasons that we, in the first meeting said they need to have a through street or a cul-de-sac is the amount of traffic that is on a cul-de-sac is limited, but that's tied to emergency access. When you have legitimate emergency access, that requirement goes away. So one of the other points that's important to the people who live on Jameson currently, also important to the applicants, is how is the road connection, if it ever occurs, going to be paid for? One of the ways the city has done this is cooperative agreements to improve Animus View Drive. We did this in a different format on Escalante Drive. The people who currently live there would not be subject to this requirement to pay into a road improvement fund unless they came to the city and wanted to annex and maybe subdivide their property into something denser. But as it stands right now, the people who live there would not be, the city wouldn't require them. It would be for the current applicants, and then if Atmos ever came into the city, they would be required to fund this, that road connection. The city also owns that lot on the northwest corner of Jameson, so the city would kick in a little bit as well. But as I said, it's voluntary for the other residents. I think I mentioned snow storage earlier and trash and recycling. The comprehensive plan density ranges, that's five to 12 units. It's gotta be a minimum of five per acre because it's medium density residential. We don't want to see one house in our medium density areas. So, the minimum is five, the maximum is 12, they're proposing 10. We'll see what we end up with. And then fair share would also kick in. Fair share applies to anything that multi-family that is more than four units. So, if this is done by subdivision, that would trigger fair share, and we would just have to go through the process to see what the fair share contribution is going to be. There are a lot of conditions of approval. I won't read them. I've hit the highlights. But here are some of the, the conditions that are in the agenda documentation. I think I've probably described most of them already. So, the plan density, there's the right-of-way dedication along Jameson. That's for the portion of Jameson that is directly in front of 73 Jameson Drive. Because it's developing in the city, it needs to be developed to city standard, so they need to dedicate enough property to have curb and gutter sidewalk and street trees, as anyone else would. We discussed design guidelines, emergency access, the sidewalk connection, the hammerhead turnaround, the special district if it is formed, snow storage and garbage and recycling. So, it is the staff recommendation. Following council direction, extensive discussions and conceptual review of the proposed development, city staff is able to accept the requested annexation and initial zoning with the conditions as amended, and with the shared understanding that approving this request does not prevent the city from pursuing connection of Jameson Drive at any point in the future. And when I walked up here, I handed this out, or I gave it to Ms. Phillips who handed it out. There are three amended conditions of approval. Condition number one changed prior to final approval, the developer, which is now the owner, in the city shall enter a formal annexation agreement. Number two, we added, as generally described in Colorado revised statutes and the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code to clarify requirements for annexation. Some of those are state statute-driven, not city code-driven. And then the last one that was changed, it was number 10, which I'll read into the record. We replace the existing language with the following. The owners and their heirs, successors and assigns, agree to participate in any future special improvement district, which includes all properties on Jameson Drive and is formed for the purpose of improving Jameson Drive or completing the Jameson Drive connection to Colorado Avenue. I guess the very last thing is the standard, which is, we recommend that you direct the city attorney to draft the ordinance language. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I have one, one question about the new suggested condition 10. And as it reads, it's, you know, I would, I would preface my remark by saying that this is a huge step towards both lowering the demands we would be making of the owner for completion of this project compared to completing all of Jameson Drive or the circle that would have consumed a lot of the property. And I think that the, you know, cooperative agreement for ultimate improvements in the road makes total sense. The, seems to me the key word in this language is that any special improvement district, which includes all properties on Jameson Drive. And my understa, and I think I need clarification perhaps from the attorney about how special improvements districts typically work. But this suggests to me that any of the dozen or so existing owners would essentially have veto power by not joining.
Yeah, I think it's unlikely, I would say, going forward that this would ever occur because it would be tricky, but I think there are ways that would be coordinated between the county and the city to do this. We discussed that option even in Escalante. So I think the issue here was they wanted this language so that they didn't, they wanted to make sure that all of the prob, in other words, they didn't want to be stuck being the only property contributing again. So we could clarify that, I suppose, but it would be properties, another way I could suggest we change that is include all properties on Jameson Drive the city has jurisdiction over, for instance. I mean, that would solve your issue, I think, but that language change may change the negotiation stance here a bit.
Dirk, when you say they, is that the proponents?
Right.
Okay, got it. So they, they wanted this condition?
They wanted this condition.
Got it. And I think that, I don't see that annexation, we can impose conditions on people outside the annexation.
There are in, or those that are in.
Right, this, you know, this pro, the special improvement district process is spelled out by statute and by our code, so we would have to go through that process. I think the issue would be at that point, and again, I think in the real world, this is unlikely to occur. It's possible, it's unlikely.
The, it here is being the formation of the district.
Yeah, being the district, yeah, I think that's an unlikely possibility, but it is possible down the road. It could be 20 years from now, somebody drives the idea, that's a way to finance those improvements. So I think the landscape will look very differently at that point. I understand the issue, but they wanted to say, we will contribute our fair share of the road in comparison to all the properties on the road. So I think that, that is the way the work, that's the way the condition is working.
Interfere with that too. I mean, at that point, the, those other residents along Jameson, if they were to become a special improvement district, would have, they would be, they would have to be voting participants in, in that same language. So it's not like we're dictating anything to them right now.
Right, no, this doesn't, this doesn't find anybody else other than these.
Only they would request a special improvements district anyway, so I don't, I don't see this being assigning responsibility at this point in time to anybody.
I think that's accurate. We're not, we're not compelling anyone to do anything other than these particular applicants saying they would participate in the process if that comes up down the road. If they participate in the process, another way of saying it, they would object to formation of a special improvements district which includes their property.
Yeah, okay, so then the flip side. And it also, and this, this doesn't preclude some other agreement to approve the road.
Right.
It's only as saying, if there's a spec, special improvement district that everybody wants to buy into, they agree that they, in advance, that they would.
That's right.
Okay.
I have a question. Mr. Williams, we, on number six, would you go to your slide that shows me where you're asking them to create a concrete sidewalk, and what ADA, where on your map?
So starting from the western end of the sidewalk, which is here, next to the last property, going up to Colorado Avenue, this is the ADA ramp.
No, I just can't, okay, do the little mousy thing.
Okay.
So across the street, is that what you're telling me? From their property?
The ADA ramp.
So it's across the street from their property?
Correct.
Isn't there a house? Oh, there's a house there, there's three on the lane.
It's just a city lawn. Yeah, right now, the sidewalk would be in front of a, well, it's a city-owned vacant lot that could be used to potentially build a house in some future, or it was dedicated to the city as a public purpose, which wouldn't prevent us from building a house on it.
And then where's the, where's the ramp would be?
The ramp is at the end.
Well, that's a very steep, going uphill kind of a thing, so I'm confused. I've walked it.
It's a curb ramp, not a ramp, not a, any ramp with rails.
Oh, it's not a, going straight up?
It's just a, like every terminus to every sidewalk in the town.
Okay, the one with the little bumps on it, so it's just like.
Right, just a curb ramp.
All right, so you, you want them to build a sidewalk in front of a vacant empty lot? And what was your reasoning for that?
Because the people who live here are gonna want to connect to Colorado Avenue, to the sidewalk system there, and to, if they wanted to walk to school, this is the way, for example, this is the way that the, the kids would do it.
And I think it's worth mentioning that 12 new units here would virtually double the number of houses on the street.
I think it's a good compromise to, the, the concept that originally the city wanted connectivity.
Right.
And that's, that's a stated goal to have connectivity in the neighborhoods, and so without putting the road through, at, at minimum, we got a sidewalk connection.
A sidewalk would be flat, but that has a hill, so do they have to build it going straight up too?
They would meet the grade, correct. So, I'm not an ADA expert, it's my understanding.
It's pretty steep.
That not every ADA compliance issue is someone in a wheelchair. There are people who are.
Yes, I understand, understand that.
Have other disabilities, so.
Right.
I don't know if this can be ADA compliant for 100% disability.
Well, that's, that's my point, because I have been over there and I have seen how steep it climbs, so it may not meet any ADA standards.
It's my.
To be determined.
Again, my understanding is that it, it could, and I'm looking around, maybe someone here knows more about how ADAs apply than I do.
So there, in the, in the federal guidance, the PRO Act, there are allowances for mirroring the existing grades, so specifically for mountain communities like ours where you have steep grades going up.
Right.
It, it's unrealistic to expect that you would create, you know, a series of switchbacks, so there are allowances in the, in the PRO Act to mirror the existing grades, and that's what we would be doing in this situation.
Okay, I mean, it's just very steep when I, when I've been over there.
I, I think we're talking about annexation tonight, so I would leave that to staff to resolve, quite honestly, if it's.
Well, it's part of the condition.
I understand that, but I think if it becomes, if it's demonstrated to be impractical, then.
Then it'll be impractical. Okay, I can go along with that.
The question I have, obviously this is, this is a nice site plan, and that's what we, we didn't ask for this, but it was, it certainly clarifies the concept, and the salient feature of this plan is the hammerhead turnaround that precludes the need for either continuation of Jameson Drive to Colorado or the 90-foot cul-de-sac that was gonna prevent this project from moving forward, according to the proponents. So. So it, is this, although we aren't approving in any way this site-specific development plan, is, our terms, well, it can only happen if this hammerhead is approved and, and there's a commitment to, via the annexation, to do this hammerhead and something that's a site response that works with the hammerhead. So I don't know how that language gets wrapped into the annexation.
Yeah, the project can't happen without the hammerhead. Fortunately, not a whole lot has to happen for this hammerhead. When they, when they build this, these, these radius have to be, radii have to be built at a big enough angle for large vehicles, but, you know, other than that, it's just, it's, it's kind of dots on it.
Well, this is the kind of conversation we had last time, in our extended conversation about, you know, consider things like alternatives, and a hammerhead is one of them that came up in the hearing, so I'm glad to see it utilized. So it's a testimony to the fact that creativity prevailed and still has a place in community planning. So thank you for that, and thanks the proponents for that. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to--
I just have one question, just to clarify. So I was, had spoken to staff and was happy to see the road improvement agreement, which we're now scratching. So just to clarify, because the one thing that made sense to me about that road improvement agreement, the way you had previously laid it out, was that future, if you did connect it for the future to Colorado Avenue, that those road improvements would be shared with future owners of the road, not current owners of the road. So now the way it's written in here is that all individuals who live on that street will share in that cost of road connectivity, whereas before it was the, you know, the proponents as well as any future owners. So that, there's a change, if you could just clarify that.
Right, so based on what Mr. Nelson said earlier, or I believe it was one of our council, other councillors, we can't compel someone who's not in the city into this agreement. We can't compel someone who is going to build, for example, Atmos, or the city itself, or any of the current residents who might come, want to come into the city to do something to pay into that fund.
Isn't that what they're doing on the post-a-road, when they've deferred? You know, they're deferring some road improvements until other individuals buy into the land such that road improvements can be completed?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't really answer that question, it's possible.
So you're suggesting then that you can't do it because, for example, using Atmos? Nah, but if they were to be annexed in, they couldn't do it if they weren't annexed in, but if at any point they were annexed in, then they would likely share in--
Well, they, if they wanted to. I mean, no one's going to want to connect the road out of the goodness of their heart. But when they, if they do want to redevelop, they would need to come into the city to redevelop in order to, for the developer to make their money back. So at that point, as a condition of annexation, just really similar to what we're doing now, that would be a condition on that property is, in addition to A, B, C, and D, other conditions, one condition is, you have to help connect this road, and that would be something that a future council would decide on. And whether that's through, straight through to Colorado, or if it's a curve, which has been suggested by some of the neighborhood residents that is a means to slow traffic and then come out here across from Riley Park, it's--
Right, it's much flatter, closer to Riley Park and the, and the, and where it comes in. It's a better, it's a better connection. It would be a better future connection.
It would be the Colorado Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be a good--
Yes, because that road is, where Jameson is, it goes straight up. But if Atmos were ever to redevelop, then a future city council could, or the developer, could look at coming and making that connectivity on a flat surface. Oh my gosh, that's a no-brainer.
But I guess my concern is that, so the current residents, I don't know. But so that, I guess that, is that all property is on Jameson now, or, we've changed the language? And so that was my concern.
Only if it's a special improvements district.
Right, and so this, this is just one option for financing the street. It could be done in a right-of-way.
There's no commitment in any of the first nine that commit existing property owners to contribute to any road improvement currently as a result of this annexation. Only if they all put together, decide that it's all in mutual best interest to--
To connect the road.
To ask for a special improvements district, not to connect the road, to do anything. Install new sidewalks, whatever they want to do that would require a special improvements district would be the unanimous decision of all property owners to request that. And then that's all that that number 10 is being revised to say.
Okay, I was, because I, the, in the, in the other one, the way, the road improvement agreement before, suggested that a through, that, that according to staff, the through road was ultimately the best solution to maximize functionality of Jameson Drive and therefore allowing, but that they were going, through this improvement agreement, they were, they were deferring the connection to an undetermined time in which future owners of Jameson Drive could pay for that together. And so by scratching that agreement and replacing it with special improvement district, then everybody, you know, it just changes the--
In my mind, that takes existing property owners on Jameson Drive off the hook today for any participation in anything financially related to this or Atmos synergy if they come in and annex.
I was just thinking it takes, it, it's still, the through connection is still the desired goal by staff, correct?
Right, so a scenario, Atmos comes into us from five years, and so everybody says, oh, it's still as steep as it was five years ago, so. But we'll put the road through, we wiggle it through Atmos. And the Atmos makes a request as a result of the annexation to vacate the right-of-way so that they can have, be compensated for the road coming through their property, and they get to build on what is now determined to be too steep for a road. You know, something like that could happen in the future. And if that's to the benefit of everybody, then city council at that point can say, yeah, it looks like a pretty good plan. But, I mean, that's all hypothesis, and, but all we're talking about right now is, is, you know, are we comfortable in annexation of a property to, to impact in the way it is currently shown with no through, with the, with the hammerhead, and putting all that traffic back out onto Jameson in its current state with the improvements stated here to get back out onto, for the road? I, I think it's, we've come a long way since last, our last discussion.
Definitely come a long way, and I appreciate the plan, planning staff talk with the engineering division and city operations and the DFPD and all that's appropriate with the hammerhead, and that is creative also, you know, understanding our goals towards affordable housing and our desire for, and this is, this will be market rate most likely housing, but in addition, we all ultimately know that the more supply we have, it helps us balance the demand or helps us stabilize housing prices, hopefully someday over time. So all of that, yes, I agree, I just was concerned, I just wanted to make sure we weren't putting any undue burden on those current neighbors.
No, we're not.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, and I'd like to say one thing for the record first, that I do have concerns still about visitor parking, as, as Martin mentioned, and that it be resolved in the future planning processes, and there's, which the neighbors will have ability to participate in, but that the visitor parking issue get resolved to satisfaction of the neighborhood. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the annexation request. If I need to be more specific than that.
With all the conditions?
With the conditions as, as amended and provided to us today.
I'll second that.
Before asking for a vote, I'd simply like to comment and, and thank staff and the applicants and the neighbors for their intense participation in this process and, and to bring some, something to, that's workable in a pretty short time. It seems to me the biggest obstacles were the kind, the cost of the connectivity and, you know, either in actually completing the road or taking a huge chunk of the property to, to do the turnaroundabout. And I think this is a creative solution that takes a lot of the financial burden off of the immediate applicants. It clearly addresses the neighbors' concern, and my perception, the primary concern of the neighbors was the potential traffic implied by a total completion of, of Jameson Drive. So I think you addressed the neighbors', neighbors' concerns. You divide, you know, enough specificity that we can see, yeah, this is, this was, this is going to be a workable project. And it takes some of the, you know, and resolves a lot of the financial burden and at least opens the door towards some sort of a future collaboration to complete the connectivity there. It's not clear that that will happen in the lifetime of some of us on the dais. But I think if it, even if it doesn't, I think what we're looking at is a pocket neighborhood in a, an exist, you know, sort of an expansion of a pocket neighborhood in something of a pocket neighborhood that looks like a plus. And with that, I would commend everybody and ask for a vote.
Mayor Proten Marbury?
Yes.
Councillor Bookie?
Yes.
Councillor Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor Wyng?
Yes.
And I would also like to thank the neighbors for their good participation. You really made a difference.
And with that, we, I think we'll wait for the return of our refused councillor before we attend to the last two pieces of business, which should be pretty quick.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is introductions of ordinances. Item 11.1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code by amendment and addition of positions of sections, tables, and definitions in said land use and development code. I think I've seen the whole--
What number is that, Mr. Nelson?
It's 2017-15.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will finish reading that because the caption will-- It's, "An ordinance to amend Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Durango the Land Use and Development Code by amendment, addition of portions of sections, tables, and definitions in said land use code, land use and development code as further set forth in the ordinance and declaring effective date."
Do we need to say anything more?
I, we've had a public hearing and directed the attorney to prepare--
The document?
The document, and here we are.
I move to accept resolution 2017-15.
Is that ordinance?
Ordinance.
Ordinance, sorry, ordinance 27, 2017-15.
Second. Well, we have a roll call.
Can I ask one, I just make one statement that appeared that the county didn't necessarily pass-- Our, our previous discussions revolve around parity of our codes with their codes. And I understand the county did, did not do, adopt the 2015.
We're not talking about the energy code, we're talking--
I'm talking about the whole family.
We're not talking about the I codes.
Okay.
The item at hand is, is the update of the Land Use and Development Code.
Got it, got it. So with that, I'll retract my comment and, but that is--
They didn't do that?
Yeah, that was for each of them on the license codes that we are, we are more--
That's, we called for the, what was on tonight's agenda was the public hearing on the I codes at our next, to come up at our next meeting.
That's what I was, yeah.
Well, if you take the vote, I can explain it, where I, I think, and then Kevin can correct it if we're wrong.
All right.
Let's get the vote.
Let's, let's--
We're there, we're on this again, yeah.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor Marbury?
Yes.
Councillor Bookie?
Yes.
Councillor Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor Wyng?
Yes.
My, my understanding of the I codes is the city across the boards is 2015. The county is 2015 with the exception of the energy code.
Where, what are they in?
Is it 12, Kevin?
No, I think it's 9, 2019. Yeah, but they were 3 until now, they're going to 9, we're going from 9 to 12. So, okay. Last item--
We're going to 9.
--is discussion and possible action concerning final approval of the acquisition of the Garlic parcel and a resolution authorizing the acquisition and directing the city manager to execute a contract and close on the acquisition. Mr. Hall.
Good evening, councillors, Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. I'd like to thank, because it's always the last item on the agenda, that there's never an audience other than staff for, for land acquisitions. However, that said, I won't take it personally. The item before you tonight was outlined in your agenda doc a little bit, and it really relates to approximately 11 acres that the city has been really interested in acquiring for many years for purposes of the extension of the Smart 160 Trail. Just so happens to be also a parcel that we have, that water tank and an access easement across as well. So in the ongoing negotiations with Mr. Garlic, Bruce Garlic, for an acquisition of the property, the discussion came up of, well, it's really not just a trail corridor, but it's a water utility project as well, and I'm going to walk you through a few slides and give you a little background. So the property is right at the hook of Farmington Hill, right at the bottom of Farmington Hill, just directly west of the current intersection of 550 and 160. You can see it's just south of the Grand View Ridge property between the highway and, and Grand View Ridge. This is a little bit of blow up of the same parcel. It shows where the future Animus River Trail to Smart 160 Trail connection will be made at some point. The trail planning has been in the works for a couple of decades in terms of this corridor. We looked at a range of alternatives that moved it away from this corridor, ultimately coming back to this corridor. It's an old railroad bed that really lends itself well to a trail. We, as part of this process, we need to do a subdivision and boundary adjustment plan, which is moving right along. And there's still some work to be done in terms of a final review of this. But essentially, the city would be hiring, acquiring lot two, and there's four lots here. Two of them are along the edge, the bottom of the highway, and I'm going to, I'm going to take you to a photo of that real quick. But this is a rendering that was in the environmental impact statement for CDOT's Highway 160 corridor in the late 90s on that corridor. So CDOT already acknowledged this was the best place for it many, many years ago. I put it in here just because it's almost a historical piece at this point. And it's taken us this long to really get to a point where we actually have substantive possibilities to bring the trail through. So this is kind of a close-up view of the property in question. The area in the circle is generalizing the part we would acquire. What we're not acquiring is the commercial land along the highway, which had significant value and really no value to the city for any purposes. So Mr. Garlic would retain that. We did an appraisal in July of 2017 for the upper property. So we're working off a bargain sale of the appraised price. Mr. Garlic had some needs for tax credits, so he's willing to bargain sale the property down a little bit. The, you can, yeah, you can see the railroad bench that passes through. You can also see the start to the access up to the water tank, which is up here. There's an existing cell tower site that's up here that's under a long-term lease, and Mr. Garlic is going to retain that approximately 0.4 acres. And it's going to allow him to continue to, quite frankly, take advantage of what he created with the revenue stream and the lease of that property for it. The tower, what we have negotiated though is if and when the tower ever ceases to function, who knows what technology will bring, and maybe these towers won't be necessary in the future. The property automatically will revert or pass to the city at no additional cost. So here's kind of a blow up of, of that tank, and you can see the access road up. And what I might add is, this tank is under easement, as we had heard a little bit of conversation from Mr. Simpson earlier tonight. So we have an access easement that's 20 foot wide on a gravel road up to the tank site, which is about 75 by 75. It doesn't really lend itself to really being able to manage the property well for the purposes of this tank if we ever wanted to do expansion, maintenance, if there's any, ever any issues with potential water problems that come out of the tank that affect the property next to it. By owning the property, we have control over where our water line is, where the access drive is, where the tank is located, if we needed to expand the parcel to do something differently, we would have all of those abilities to do that. Under the current situation, it's a very restricted, narrow easement use of the property. That does function right now. However, the ownership of the property makes sense from a long-term standpoint. So a couple of photos, this, I'm standing on the railroad corridor looking to the north, out at the, kind of at the north property line, in fact, this fence is kind of the property line edge. Then I turned around and looked the other direction. So this is the, the corridor that the trail would be sitting on. So this is the, the corridor that the trail would be sitting on. There's a little bit of debris on the property, it's not significant. We can remove that as part of our construction project, some old lumber, there's some tires that are crossing the trail corridor that currently Mr. Garlic didn't want people coming up from the BLM Sail Barn Trailhead, which is just down the, the railroad corridor from here. Uh, again, then, as you move further around the corner, it was graded out, so it's a pretty wide, flat corridor that will lend itself well for the trail. And this is, as you look to the east out of the property, the railroad corridor is much narrower at this point because it never has been graded out. We have been in communication with that property owner for years, on and off. We haven't initiated any specific negotiations with him. He's a friend of the trail. He wants to work with us. It'd be the next step in the process. Uh, I think I called out there, it's about, uh, less than a half mile of distance to go yet, I believe, forty-two hundred linear feet, so, uh, two-thirds of a mile or so to get from this point over to where the trail's already built, underneath the bridges over in Three Springs. And then if you go back the other way, we'll have the trail corridor secured. Uh, Mr. Garlic, we can get this done. We have the BLM piece to the north that would put us at the Sail Barn Trailhead. The BLM is supportive, we just have to go through their process. And then we connect up to the NE development between Walmart and Home Depot, which is well underway, and some of that's getting built this coming year. So the pieces are really coming together in terms of moving this forward. So again, just to summarize, the Smart 160 Trail corridor is part of this, the water utility property. Uh, it's adjacent to BLM Grandview Ridge, which is, really fits in with our Parks Open Space Trails Recreation Master Plan. So we believe that these various components of this make this worthy to acquire. The, the details essentially is we would be getting ten point eight seven five acres initially for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The property, the total property appraisal came in at one point one nine million. As the survey came in, the square footage changed, so the, the value of the appraisal changes a little bit, but we're still well below appraised value on the property. There's still a couple of details that Dirk and I are working out with our attorneys in terms of contract language, but generally, substantively, we're pretty well squared away on this. Uh, we want to set this up, and Mr. Garlic wanted to set it up so we could close in December. We are queued up for doing that. We have a subdivision and annexation process underway that I believe we've already had portions of that before you in terms of requests for public hearings and that sort of thing. And that, that process will come to you over the next, I believe, the twentieth of November, I think, is the next item on that piece of it. But what we would do here is if there's approval tonight, we'll get the, the contract finalized and executed, and then we'll go through the due diligence items necessary to do a closing on December the twentieth.
Thank you.
So unless you have any questions, that's kind of where we're at.
I, I'd like to add two things to Kevin's presentation, if I could. Uh, the first is to point out how we have two different funds that are making this happen. If the trail easement is the primary, the Parks Open Space Fund, the Dedicated Revenue Fund would not be able to buy the whole property. That's too much of a take from that fund. Likewise, if the water fund had to buy the whole thing, it, it wouldn't pencil. So having these two businesses available to split the cost makes it happen. And when the, every time you have a water tank, they're always going to be elevated. Uh, we have a system, if you look at our topography, it is a very difficult system with different zones, different pressures, that all the water tanks have to be at a certain elevation so that we can avoid pumping costs to new developments. It also creates, um, a liability because you're, you're dealing with a potential. Uh, and some of you were on the council when Tank Averde had a water main rupture, and we flooded out several houses. And that development that was flooded, um, is too close, there's no way to avoid it. To serve that development, need the tank, those houses are right, right there in the backyard. By controlling this property, we're avoiding any future risk of a, it, it's going to happen. Anytime you have a mechanical system like this, you're going to have a leak from time to time, some, something's going to go wrong. And, but that's an opportunity, because if we're looking at evaluating hydro in the future, that tank's a battery. The potential energy of that water coming down the hill is a battery. And if we control that land, that's an opportunity to put a low-head hydro. Uh, if that was developed, then you'd have to negotiate with those new property owners to get an easement. So I think this is a great, um, opportunity for us, as Kevin's given you all the reasons. I just wanted to state those two to add to the list.
Well, I'm going to chime in about planning, because Mr. Simpson wanted us to remove this piece of property, and he didn't want us to buy it. Well, that's what city council does. They look to the future, they take steps to, uh, we're going to be connecting Three Springs back to the city at some point in the future. So if we didn't make this acquisition, there would be no planning, there would be no future, it wouldn't happen. And that's what I like about city council, and that's what I love about the, I'm on the Natural Lands Board, and this was discussed at my board meeting, and they were, they're totally supportive of this idea, because they can look to the future and have a vision and see how connectivity can happen with that dedicated sales tax. And so I'm really pleased about this for, and it is taking steps one by one for that connectivity. And that's what city council does, in my opinion, is to, to look at, have a future, have a plan, and make that plan happen.
You're absolutely right. If you were standing at that tank and facing towards us...
Yes.
You would see the new interchange...
Mm-hmm.
And you would see the web ranch, which eventually is going to come into the city. That's one square mile of prime property.
Development, yes.
And that tank is important to servicing water at Webb and to Three Springs.
I was going to ask exactly that, what, sort of, would you criticize where, you know, buying a piece of land that would maintain in perpetuity this, this ownership of this tank location? Uh, and who, who does it serve, uh, currently, and what's its potential for expansion and serving other ex, uh, web ranches to set? So I mean, I, right now, it serves Three Springs, it serves, uh, I assume, right across the street into, down, in everything this side of the hybrid?
It, it'll also be important when, uh, the poster road comes into play, right? Does that elevation allow it to go up here, Park, and so?
Right. So, a, and for, you know, to think of it in just terms of, yeah, we can, we don't have to spend any money because we currently have a, a right-of-way is totally myopic. I mean, i- if you put it in just a visual sense, I mean, City of Durango controls that point of, of land, which is the gateway, you know, one of the gateways, critical visual gateways to Durango, for no other reason, other than prevent a, another, uh, uh, use store it to be developed in layers up the side of that mountain, which could, you know, as an entry point, focal point to Durango. I believe it's imperative that the City of Durango acquire this crucial piece of property. And, and the fact that it has a water usage and a trail usage is, is, in my mind, number three. But it, absolutely, I think this is a great investment. And I wish, you know, I, I wish we'd had money to buy the commercial land as well, because then we would have control of clearly a, a, a quality gateway into the community. But hopefully with, uh, this cash, Mr. Garlic can do a really good job of development of that area in the future. So...
But if, I believe, is, is it not true that those would be sales tax yielding pro, uh, businesses at, even right now?
All of this property will, including this business...
It'll all be in the city.
...will annexed into the city as part of this process that we're going through with the subdivision.
And so, so that, what is it, trailers and the rental car?
Mm-hmm, enterprise is there.
So there's some sales tax revenue involved there. Uh, and, you know, I, I, I appreciate the, the additional comments about the value for the water system alone, which was what Mr. Simpson was concerned about, why don't we just buy it all out of that? I mean, I think it really does make sense to split the cost between the two funds.
Right.
And, um, you know, unfortunately, they are enterprise funds where we have the resources to make this kind of acquisition. Uh, I did have one question concerning, uh, well, this isn't the annexation hearing, but I assume it's the, uh, we have sort of leapfrogging the federal land as the, provides the continuity...
No, we already have annexed the highway corridor down...
Oh, the highway corridor's already...
What's unique is that happened before, the statute's changed where we, we can't do highway kind of corridor annexations anymore, but we happen to have done that one, so this has got the, uh, continuity by way of that.
Great. Quick question on the, on the appraisal. You mentioned in your presentation that there was a subsequent appraisal after the subdivision.
No, the subdivision came after the appraisal, so there was an estimate on the acreage, the square footage of the total parcel. The, uh, square footage on the total parcel was estimated at approximately twelve point seven acres per the county's, uh, GIS system, because we didn't have a, a good survey. We've done the survey, and the number comes down more than an acre. So it kind of affects that this, the value per square foot is still the same, but in terms of the value to us, in terms of what we're acquiring, it doesn't really affect it, but it, the overall appraisal of the total is different.
Didn't you say you've been working on this since the nineties?
Well, in fact, I, I walked on this property in, I want to say, two thousand and two, with Mr. Garlic. And, you know, it just wasn't the right time at that time, and we've all stayed in contact, and we've certainly worked with Mr. Garlic on many other things. He, he's a supporter of the trail as well, but this is also one of his assets, so we work with him like we do on so many other land acquisitions to strike a fair deal, and I think we're pretty close to being there, and this is one of the steps along the way is getting you to approve the resolution to allow Ron to finish things up.
Mm-hmm. I'm glad it's all happening. I mean, I'm glad we have a willing seller, and it's, uh, it, it's another piece of putting it all together, and that's a vision, and that's a future, and that's called planning. So, golly, with that, Mayor, if it's all right, I will move to approve the attached resolution authorizing the acquisition and direct the city manager to execute a contract and close on the acquisition.
And what is the resolution number?
It would be R two thousand seventeen thirty-five.
Okay. All right. Um, resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty-five? Is that what you just said?
That's what I said.
Okay.
Sir?
Well, we are, may, may we have a roll call?
Counselor Bookie?
Yes.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Yussup?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
And that really is the end of the agenda for the evening, uh, during the meeting at nine thirty-five.
Wow, that fire department vote was very...